Testing, testing, one, two, three. All right, okay, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight. It is March 10th, 2021. This is the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education meeting tonight. Wonderful night. It's nice to see spring starting to usher itself in. So, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Corey Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichek.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you also verify that we've been properly posted?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. We're going to move right into bright lights tonight. We have Amanda Wagner, Kevin Kitzler, and Kristen Higgins. They're here tonight to talk about the Avid Sites of Distinction. Welcome tonight. We're excited to hear more details. We had announced it last month. We just found out like just before the board meeting last month, and now we get to really dive into some details. So, we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. We have quite a crew of bright leaders as well as avid elective teachers and classroom teachers who wanted to share their experience with.
Is the microphone on?
Test. There we go.
Let's start over a little bit.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us here tonight. We're going to be talking about our Avid certification, and we, all of our secondary schools, I'm pleased to announce that have met Avid certification. So, they're certified Avid schools, which is phenomenal. However, we do have two schools that we want to recognize for receiving a national honor, being Avid school-wide sites of distinction. Those schools are Waukesha North, which began Avid in 2017. So, three years ago, they began their Avid journey, and they've achieved this distinction. And Waukesha South, who began their Avid journey in 2010, and this is the second year that they have been named an Avid school-wide site of distinction. So, what this means is these schools are, not only do they have rock-solid Avid elective programs, but they have a solid Avid school-wide program that's become a system in their school. There are three major criteria that need to be met in order for a school to be named a school-wide site of distinction. There are currently five, to my knowledge, high schools in the state who have the certification. Waukesha North, Waukesha South, Maquon-Homestead-Thiensville, Madison East, and Elkhorn High School. The fact that we have two of the five is pretty incredible. Our sites have to have a Level III or higher on their certification and coaching instrument. This means that certain systems are in place when it comes to instruction, systems, leadership, and culture. They also need to meet some process and impact metrics that I'll share with you in a minute. And 10% of their student body needs to be enrolled in the Avid elective. So, when we think about that, the reason Waukesha West is not here tonight is Waukesha West, this is their first year of having Avid ninth through 12th grade, so they do not yet have 10% of their student body in Avid elective. We hope that there'll be a site-wide distinction soon. So, in terms of process metrics, this is how we're measuring that the systems are in place. We need to have at least 70% of our teachers routinely using writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading strategies. Both sites are definitely doing this. We need to have at least 60% of our staff trained, and you can see that 70% of the North staff has been trained, 78% of the South staff has been trained in Avid, as well as ensuring that our leadership teams are making decisions informed by the data and Avid's impact. Which brings us to those impact metrics. I believe these to be the most important metrics because it's really about closing the opportunity gap, and that is the mission of Avid. When we look at college acceptance rates, 71% of our students at North and 79% of our students at South, school-wide, this is not the Avid elective students only, it's school-wide, every single 11th and 12th grader at these schools, 71% and 79%, are applying and have been accepted to a two- or four-year college last year. Another significant point here is our students who are taking rigorous classes, our 11th and 12th graders, school-wide, at Waukesha North and Waukesha South, 62% of them at North are taking an Advanced Placement, a Project Lead the Way, a dual enrollment class. North started Avid in 2017, and according to our site data from 2017, we had 50% of our 11th and 12th graders taking those courses. We've jumped to 62.5. That's a significant increase. At South, we have 68% of the 11th and 12th grade student body taking those rigorous courses. When we look at and pull up the Avid elective students, at North, we had 60% Avid elective, and at South, we had 90% of Avid elective students taking those rigorous classes. The difference there is, South has had Avid since 2010. Things become tradition and expectation, and I definitely believe that will be happening at Waukesha North as the years go by. So, enough for me. Now, it's time to hear from our staff, who are truly embedded every single day with Avid school-wide and Avid with our elective students.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. My name is Mike Demmele. I teach one of the Avid electives at North High School. So, seeing these charts and graphs is really cool because as a teacher, we often don't see those numbers until kind of after the fact because we're living it day-to-day. And so, I measure the success of our Avid program by the stories that I see and experience with the students. I've been fortunate to see our first graduating class come all the way through our Avid program, and so, I've been able to keep in touch with some of those students this year, now that they're off in college. And so, when I think of what makes me proud to be a part of our Avid program, I think of their stories and how they're continuing and how they're being productive in the world, in their workforce, and at their colleges. I think of stories like Amara, who is thriving in college because of the organizational skills she learned in Avid. I think of Carlos, who is thriving in college, getting the best grades of his life as a math major, and he learns to teach math to others in our tutorials, in our program. I think of a student like Drew, who is taking the love of learning that she acquired in our schools and is now turning around and giving that back by studying to become an elementary teacher. I think of a student like Giselle, who is transferring to her dream school next year because she won another scholarship that will make it affordable for her. Or, I think of Maddie, who is currently a full-time firefighter in Waukesha County and is going to school full-time as well, and she thanks the communication and organization skills that she learned in Avid for her success in both of those endeavors. So, what makes me proud to be in Avid is to hear those stories. To me, that beats any statistic or chart that we have, except maybe one, and that is that they are just a handful of students that have come through our program. They are just a handful of a class of 25 that went off to college or the workforce last year, just from North High School. There will be another 20-something this year and another 20-something after that, and that's on top of, of course, hundreds of students that have already graduated from South's Avid program, and hopefully, there will be thousands more that come through our district as well. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kristen Torzalla. I've been an educator at North for 16 years now. Initially, I was a math teacher, but now, I'm the instructional coach and the Avid site coordinator. During my time, I have seen many changes in every part of the district, but the one thing that has stuck and gotten the most support is Avid. At North, Avid has impacted every corner of our building. Every time we have a meeting or professional development, Avid strategies are used throughout. Even when our topic isn't Avid, we model strategies to show our teachers how they can be used in all classrooms. Avid allows our teachers to speak a common language, no matter what they teach, and can collaborate even if they are teaching different subjects. Because of this, our staff is continually implementing strategies in their classrooms in order to support all students. We have much to celebrate with our school-wide implementation. One of our teachers, who works with students with intellectual disabilities, uses the focus note-taking strategies, has our students write in their agendas, and they do inquiry in their classrooms. All teachers post agendas in essential questions in classrooms and in BB9. One of our teachers went from struggling to be an effective classroom teacher to being one of our top teachers because of her effective use of Avid strategies. In addition to seeing all the changes in the classroom instruction, we have seen changes in our students as well. When walking into classrooms, you can hear students using academic language. In classroom discussions, students appropriately respond to other students. For example, "Joe, I hear what you're saying, but I respectfully disagree with you." Or, "I agree with what Jane said because..." Students all have agendas in our classrooms, which they use daily to keep track of assignments, tests, and other expectations. But, most importantly, our students know they have support from all teachers to reach their goals for after-high school, no matter what that choice may be. Avid has given our staff a focus. It has given us goals to work towards and strategies to meet those goals. Avid has given us a common language for all of our staff to speak. Avid has given our students skills and strategies to use once they leave high school to ensure success. Avid has given our students and staff a drive. Avid has transformed North High School.
My name is Laura Carrato, and I teach science at South. I want to talk about how Avid has changed our thinking about rigor. So, when we think of good schools, we think of rigor, but rigor is often confused with doing more, so writing a longer paper, you know, teaching more content. There are many problems with this logic, but one of them is that rigorous learning becomes something that is only available to the most academically talented students. But, all students, no matter where their academic level is right now, deserve to have a rigorous education. So, through Avid, our school has learned to redefine rigor. We've learned that it's not about learning more stuff, but developing a more complex understanding of material. We've also learned how to provide the academic tools necessary for students to access a rigorous curriculum, like how to break down text or to take useful notes. This is why I am proud to say you can walk into any classroom at South and see students engaged in truly challenging work. It's also why we can have so many students enrolled in AP classes when they may not have been able to do so in other districts. We have helped them to develop the skills necessary to achieve at that high level. I'm lucky enough to teach both freshman classes and senior AP classes, and so, I get to see kids along that journey. And it's such a privilege and an honor to witness how the use of Avid strategies in all of our classes has transformed those students from squirrely freshmen, who can barely write a paragraph, to these confident, competent, young adults who are taking a college-science class in high school, and we can give Avid credit for that.
Hi, I'm Melissa Barant. I'm the Avid site coordinator at South High School, as well as the instructional coach there. So, I just wanted to speak to Avid from the instructional lens, working mostly with new teachers, but also our veteran teachers at South High School. The biggest thing that Avid has helped us with, as Kristen Torzalla had mentioned, was that goal-setting piece and giving us a really specific focus when we talk about WICER in our lessons, so writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And as an instructional coach, that gives me a framework then to talk with new teachers that are coming into our district and to give them kind of that groundwork, and this is what we do at South High School, to promote that rigor that Laura Carrato was just talking about. We also, as North had mentioned, bring in our professional development around Avid. We have PLC conversations. And the best thing, I think, since starting 2010 to now, we are now starting to have those conversations that dive deeper into instruction. So, it's not a matter of just checking the box around WICER, but we're hearing people talk about what makes a good summary, how are students reflecting, how are they showing their thinking? And I think that's really where we're starting to transform at South High School, of really diving deeper into really what does rigor look like. And then, as Laura had just mentioned, that's helping students succeed in those higher-level classes. We also talked about systems a lot lately at South High School and making sure that we have systems in place, not only for school-wide, but also our Avid elective students. And Amanda Wagner obviously has done a great job of growing the Avid elective throughout the district, which is now also helping us at South High School continue to grow the Avid elective. And so, we're seeing so much success with our Avid students. Yeah, and that's what we have at South High School going on right now.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dan Schreier. I teach at Waukesha South. I teach both Calculus and Avid. I've somehow taught Avid for the last 10 years. I started with Amanda Wagner 10 years ago. She was a phenomenal Avid elective teacher, who kids fondly called their second mom. I have worked with three of our South graduating classes and currently have a group of Avid seniors, two of which will be on full rides to college next year for four years, and I think that number could be growing over the next couple of weeks and months. And I have, this year, my first-ever group of freshmen. It is impossible to sum up what Avid is and the impact it has on both students and teachers. I think the most amazing thing I've seen from a teaching standpoint is the development of engaging college readiness instructional practices that have become a point of pride in our school. With students, it provides a space for them to grow as individuals and to get answers to as many questions as possible, from content questions to FAFSA questions, college applications, to whatever comes across the table that day. Most importantly, it leaves some questions unanswered, but celebrates the endless sifting and winnowing of knowledge. I think the most important thing I've seen since my first Avid class to now is the systematic changes that are in place to help students. We have a system that wraps around students, providing supports in a variety of ways that reach well beyond the Avid classroom to the entire school. We've connected students with alumni, secured college scholarships, and generally helped with the ups and downs of life. It's honestly, as Mike was saying, it's honestly been just super cool to hear stories from college or from high school graduates. My first class is about 25, 26-years-old right now, and to hear their stories has just been incredibly exciting. They are now living lives that, and they were in high school too, but they're living lives they're really, really proud of, being college graduates and working across the United States in a variety of jobs. We are, at South, we are working on becoming an Avid National Demonstration School, so we reached out to Avid graduates, looking for a two-minute video to add to our upcoming Avid showcase presentation. We sent out that message tonight, and one student responded within five minutes. He posted a two-minute video that stated, "I would not be where I am today if it were not for Avid." Dang it. "I would not be where I am today if it were not for Avid. Being a first-generation student, a trailblazer for my family, I was not well-informed on what college was really about. I can't thank Avid enough and the program enough. I am glad to be an Avid advocate." Thank you.
Thank you for letting us share our story with you, and we look forward to continue to growing our Avid system across Waukesha. Are there any questions?
Ms. Baumgart.
Not a question, Amanda. More agreement with you. You know, and some of you know that as board members, we aren't supposed to really have favorites, right? But, your plan is one of the ones I'm favored. And I would like to thank you for the way you presented it today. I mean, I've been, I've seen your work in person many times over there, and before the last year or two's messed everything up. But, the way you were able to connect up for me as to what the areas of distinction are required was very meaningful, and I appreciate that, just as much as I appreciate what the staff has said about the accomplishments that you've done, the school-wide benefits that have been coming out of this program. There's so much positive things with Avid. I just appreciate very much the work you've done and to continue it with the rest of the kids as they... And by the way, the programs, we've seen kids that have come back and told us what has happened, really rings true with what you guys do, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I'm excited about the fact we have North and South here together, both talking about a program that's been successful for both of you, and the passion that educators have for it and the growth opportunity that you're telling us about to both the educators and the students. I think, you know, 10 years ago, our college readiness standards weren't quite what they should be, and we've made a lot of changes since then, and Avid's one of them, that has made the racial of success going into college much higher for kids. We have, you know, it's a 12-year process to finish a child, right? You start 13 or 14-penny. But, when you look at our finishing schools, our three high schools, there isn't a single one of those high schools that wouldn't be a jewel of any other high school, any other district in the state. I mean, everybody looks at Waukesha as a special place because we have these unique high schools that achieve uniquely in a special way. And when we were searching for superintendents, I know you guys were a big attraction, what we're doing here in Waukesha with things like Avid and the diversity that we offer and how much we're trying to, the passion of our staff, and the excitement of kids that leave Waukesha. So, thanks for coming here tonight and sharing with us your Avid story. I know I need to find out more about it because Mr. Baumgart always has a jump on me, I know the sense, but I really appreciate you coming tonight and telling your stories as North and South.
Ms. Montiel.
Thank you. Thank you so much for presenting what Avid, it is truly a fantastic program, but without teachers like you and students involved, it would be not, it would just be a program that's not implemented. So, thank you. I know that you go the extra mile, as all teachers do, but to participate in this program, I think is especially meaningful, especially difficult, but just the gentleman's testimony and yours and all of yours about how you were contacted by students after they graduate. We've all had teachers like that. I still remember them, remember their faces. I guarantee you all have decades of future students like that. So, thank you. Our end product in this district is our students. That is what speaks most loudly about it. The people that have the most impact are you. So, thank you. We can do whatever we want in this boardroom. We can pass out the policies we want. Without your involvement and your dedication, it would be anything. Great teachers are great things. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I did have a question. As far, whoever wants to answer this, what do you think is the most meaningful thing students who are at Avid take away and last the longest? I put me on the spot, so I'm sorry.
I'm going to give them a minute to think, and my response to that is a sense of belonging, family, and knowing that they can do anything that they open their mind to doing. Anyone else?
I was going to say self-advocacy, knowing when they're struggling.
We have to let those out in TV land now.
I was going to say self-advocacy, the kids knowing when they're struggling and wanting to ask for help, and how to appropriately ask questions also when they're struggling. So, that would be my number one.
Thank you. To build off of Kristen T., I would say one of the most impactful pieces is the communication skills that students walk away with. 22 years in education, I've seen the ability for students to communicate, I've seen it dwindle, and in large part, I think some of that is due to technology and being unable to have those face-to-face conversations with one another, with peers, with adults. And Avid has brought that back. And so, for me, when I see, as an administrator, and I can go from classroom to classroom, I see an entire perspective of what's going on in the building, and to walk into, no matter what classroom, and see students being able to talk with one another and have respectful conversations, even if they disagree, to see that students can use sentence starters and just different stems, and they can carry those skills with them as they go off into college or the workforce, and it's not just our Avid elective students, we're talking about all students. So, I didn't speak tonight because I think everybody, our coaches and teachers, and Amanda did an excellent job, but from my lens as an administrator, to see something happen entirely school-wide, it has brought focus to our building, it's brought focus to our team, and when we walk into classrooms, we know what we're looking for, and we have a very specific focus in what we're coaching our educators on. So, that was probably more than I should have said. Thank you.
I just want to add that I think what separates the Avid students from the non-Avid students in my classroom is they're comfortable when they don't know something, and they can live in the struggle and know that there's value in it. My student teacher looked at my class today of AP students, many of whom are Avid students, and said, "Well, how did you get them to that point where they can work in the groove on this problem that's hard for them, and they're not asking you for help?" She said, "Like, how long did it take?" And I said, "They could do it on day one, because they came in after all of these years at South, like, ready to do that." I think that's valuable.
Any other questions? Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to echo my colleagues in saying thank you so much for the presentation and for your work, your enthusiasm, just in your brief presentation shows how much you're committed to this, knowing students by first name, knowing their stories, the raw emotion that comes out in sharing their story. So, thank you for your parts in that. Actually, I'm really glad that you asked your question because it was one of mine. So, there's students who select to be in Avid, and then you have the Avid wide across the school, and for all of those students who did not choose to be in it, but still get to some of the benefits, you've listed those off, and those are skills that they're going to take with them. To the students that are in the program, for some of them, just as the student who testified, they never saw college in their future, and thank you for opening their eyes to those opportunities. Whether or not they choose to take it, depending on where their life takes them, just to know that they have that ability is amazing. So, please stick around for a few more years. My children are starting out. So, I really appreciate your support. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Dietz.
Amanda, I assume that there are several districts in the state that are using Avid?
Yes, it's growing, especially in southeastern Wisconsin. Would you like me to list them?
Just, I mean...
Give you a couple?
Can you give me a percentage, or can you...
I can't give you a percentage, but I can tell you around us, there's Muskego, Brookfield, Madison, Green Bay, West Dallas, O'Conawak just started this year, Walatosa, Elkhorn. So, it is definitely growing here in Wisconsin.
Which I would say has something to do with the success here in Waukesha.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I mean, you're leading the way in this beyond just this district, and it's very obvious and evident. I'm not surprised with the distinction awards when I see the talented educators and the leadership in front of me. You guys are amazing. After a long day, you come and give a presentation like this and show the excitement and enthusiasm for a program, and you do so because you care a lot about kids, and you know what works, and you implement it. So, congratulations and keep up the good work. Very nice presentation tonight. Any next steps that you could share with us?
Oh, of course, we have next steps. Our next step for Waukesha South is going through the demonstration school process, which will allow us to bring other school sites in across the country to see Avid in action. We would also love for North to continue on that journey in, you know, a five-year, five-to-seven-year plan. We want to make sure that our middle schools continue to grow, they're all very new in Avid, and our elementary schools, we wish to continue to expand, because if we can start our students young with organization and self-advocacy and leadership, what we see when they are now in middle school is absolutely amazing. In fact, just, we have some ninth graders who started in Avid as seventh graders over at Les Paul, and the amount these students have changed and their ability to articulate their thoughts is mind-blowing. So, I always say, like, we better get ready when the students start moving through the system to keep upping our rigor.
Great job. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you all for your support. Thank you all for your support.
Mr. Ryan Chek?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you've been doing this about 10 years, and I got on the board from 10 years ago. And there were a lot of initiatives got forward and a lot of different strategies for homework and reading and all sorts of things that administrators and teachers are always bringing forward. This is new, we're going to try this, this is new. And so, I just thought, oh, this is one of those, but in 10 years, I don't think I've heard anything like this, when kids are coming back and saying, "This has helped just change my life, this is where I am now," and wanting to just tell more people so that they can start younger. And not only have you grown that and all of your passion, and now it's in different levels and spreading out through the town, and that all started with your passion and people too. So, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you for your authentic presentations tonight. I've known Amanda and Dan probably the longest of the group up there. And your raw emotions, Dan, hey, yeah, you know, it's meaningful, right? It means a lot to, to you guys, what you do. And when you get that kind of feedback and you see the kind of influence and impact you've had on people, it's real. It's real, and that's what it's really all about. And I appreciate the example of someone disagreeing with Joe respectfully.
I didn't even think of that.
That was fantastic. I loved that.
I was trying to think of like a generic name, and I was like, Joe.
I'm just an average Joe, so, congratulations.
Disagreeing with Joe is a sport. Pardon? Disagreeing with Joe is a sport.
Yeah, yeah. I like good sportsmanship with that. Okay, moving on to our recognitions. Sharon Seedy typically takes this, but I'm not sure who's going to fill in for... Oh, Sharon is here. I see Sharon. Come on here, Sharon.
Is it time? Yes. I'm all over. Is this still on? Oh, yes, it is. Hi. Okay, so, this evening, the Employee Recognition Award for March is being presented to Maria Peters. So, Maria started in the School District of Waukesha in 2008 as the Bilingual Family and Community Liaison. Her nominators begin by saying that Maria truly encompasses the word service. She is a critical part of supporting SDW Spanish-speaking families. As the Bilingual Family Community Liaison for the districts, she advocates her students' families and the district. She collaborates with staff across the district to serve students not only academically but personally. Whether it's a student needing an alternative placement to be able to graduate with his or her class, to a student not knowing that the reason for not doing well in school is because they actually can't see the board and the teacher until Maria helps them get an eye exam and get glasses. She is always building an extensive network of community resources for anyone in need, ranging from housing, food, transportation, medical services, school supplies, or even adopting a dog. The examples of her extensive work with students and families is far too many to count, and due to confidentiality, they cannot all be shared, but we have a few we'd like to share with you. Many years ago, she had the idea of hosting a summer program and recreation fair for families so they could sign their children up for summer opportunities and have more access. Throughout these 10-plus years, she's partnered with local organizations and helped hundreds of students get free eye exams and glasses, as well as dental checkups and routine and specialized healthcare. Just this year, she received a school supply donation over $7,000, school supplies that she patiently organized, boxed, and sent to each and every school in the district. She started a collaboration with the Waukesha Police Department and started the first and only Spanish Police Citizens Academy. As a result, community members have built trusting relationships with officers, which results in a safer community. Many years ago, she also worked in collaboration with Carroll University in creating summer sports camps for children to keep them active for a weekend summer and allow them to try new sports and, again, have greater access to opportunity. Throughout the years, she has also presented countless presentations to parents and students on topics such as cultural awareness, transition to middle or high school, college, internet safety, and drug and alcohol abuse, just to name a few. Among the many admirable traits of Maria and her work is her listening and ability to always see the best in people and never give up on anyone, not to mention that she masters the skill of de-escalating some of the most difficult situations. As you can see, this is just a sample of what Maria's work includes, and she serves with her heart, mind, and soul. She gives her all to every situation. She's a powerful, quiet leader whose work and actions speak louder than words. She is humble beyond belief. Students who never thought graduation was possible or college was just an illusion, she's helped connect them, and she's made their dreams come true, and she does it all out of love and service for others. So, on behalf of the district, I'm really excited to congratulate Maria Peters on being selected to receive the School District of Waukesha Employee Recognition Award.
Thank you so much for the kind words. I love my job. And the recognition of my work, of any of my work that I do, would have to be shared with the great teams of professionals that I work with every day in order to serve the students and families of the school district of Waukesha. People like my coworker, Letty S. Campos, who's somewhere around here, who puts up with me every day, my supervisor, Luke Pinnion, who is a great leader and manager, all the social workers, teachers, school psychologists, counselors, administrators, custodians, everyone that I have the honor of working with and for. That words they heard tonight may make it seem like I have no shortcomings. Trust me, I do many. But where I fall short, others succeed, and together we make something that is worth celebrating tonight. So, thank you.
Such a humble, lovely person. Well-deserved. Tonight, we're going to, next here from our Waukesha North students on what's happening at North. Maggie and Kellen are, are you able to hear or see me? Come on in, welcome.
Hello.
Hi. Hi, we're from North. I'm Maggie.
I'm Kellen.
All right.
We see you brought your fearless leader, too.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the right one. Yep. All right, while this is loading, we'll reintroduce Maggie Flanagan and Kellen Figaro. This is their second presentation to the board this year. They were, I think we visited back in January, so in just less than three short months, they're back here again, sharing some great happenings around our building. And we're proud to have them here tonight as they are going to pass off the torch to some incredible juniors next year. So, take the way, I think. Is it still being difficult here? Yeah. It looked like it was going to go on and end.
Should be boardroom. It's the boardroom, right?
Yeah. The calls connected, and then...
Should we try? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe Kellen can try. There we go.
Oh, okay, here's your code. Are you in there?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, this has been what's going on in Waukesha North over the past few months. So, two of the teachers in our school, Mr. Riccardi and Ms. Vlog, both received $6,000 for themselves and for school from the Herb Cole Educational Foundation. And Maggie Flanagan, who's here with us today, received a $10,000 scholarship.
Maggie did not want to take over that slide. She was very clear. She volunteered Kellen to take that one. Thank you for your note, too. I had to get that out of mail. Thank you. North earned the Avid school-wide site of distinction recognition in only two years of the program. Most schools do not receive this recognition, and if they do, it takes many years to do that. Only two other high schools in the state of Wisconsin did this, and one of them was Waukesha South, so that's super cool.
Waukesha North was interviewed by TMJ4, and they interviewed one of our students, Samaria Barnes. She's one of many Avid students who has been offered a college scholarship. She's a first-generation college student, and she's been offered a $100,000 scholarship, which is amazing.
Malin Bend received the National Center for Women and Information Technology Aspirations in Computing Honorable Mention Award, so go Malin.
So, this is the first year of Waukesha North's competency pilot program to help at-risk students graduate. We are pleased to share that we have our first successful graduate of this program.
The North staff raised over $1,000 for supporting casual for a cause, which, when they pay $5 on Thursdays, they can wear jeans. The North Star Staff Team was awarded a Donut Breakfast, compliments of the Waukesha Education Foundation.
So, in the boys' basketball season, obviously, at the beginning of the year, there weren't many fans, but slowly but surely, we were able to get more fans in the building to watch and support our boys. They won in the first round of their playoffs, and in the second round, they lost in a close match against Arrowhead.
For the girls' basketball team, Erica Sweet, number four, broke the record for the greatest number of three-pointers in her entire season, so now she holds that record at North. They beat Guanaco for the first time in over 2,000 days. They won their first regional game in the playoffs, and they stayed really close to Arrowhead in the second round of the playoffs.
For gymnastics, one of our North students, Audrey Corns, represented the team in state this year.
For the boys' swim and dive, the team beat South for the first time in nearly 30 years, and they finished fourth in the state this year.
For wrestling this year, Eli Zerbal represented Waukesha North at the sectional meet where he placed fourth. In a normal year, this would mean that he would go to state, but however, this year they had to cut the state bracket in half, so he wasn't able to attend.
The cheer team performed at all of the home basketball games this season. They placed ninth in their virtual competition in both Cheer Dance and Game Day, and they're very grateful to have this season despite it being an abnormal season.
For the Waukesha Wings Boys Hockey, they placed second in the Joey Ray Home Tournament. They beat Brookfield in the first round of the playoffs and beat KMMO in the last regular season game.
The dance team just finished their final regular season competition this past weekend virtually. They're getting ready to compete in person in two weeks for regionals at Walatosa West. If they qualify for state, the team will be competing virtually to finish up the season.
For drama club, they finished their successful run of their show, "Radium Girls", and the show was pre-recorded for people to buy and watch online.
Key Club. Before Christmas break, Key Club decorated the atrium to spread holiday cheer. You see in that picture in the right corner, that's Mr. Bumbles, and he's like 12 feet tall. Ms. Warner was super excited about that this year. For exams, the club put together goodie bags for students to wish them good luck on their exams. The club continued their tradition of Crush Grooms that allowed students to send Crush sodas to their friends or crushes. Right now, the club is raising money for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. The goal is to sell 317 San Rocks by March 17th. Key Club has been very creative this year to create volunteer opportunities within the school because it's really hard to find opportunities outside the school this year, and they've done a really good job this year.
For Student Council, they finished their second blood drive this year. They were only able to collect blood from Cohort Two students in the last blood drive. This second blood drive was way more successful because they were able to collect blood from the entire school.
The finished yearbook is due to the publishing, due to the publishing company this month on March 31st. They moved to a fully online design program this year so that all students could work anywhere. There are some pages about quarantine, at-home learning, and how this year is different. And the name of the yearbook this year is kind of dedicated to how crazy it was, so it's called Silver Lining, which I think was really creative.
So, for the Kai Lerner Foundation, the Kai Lerner Foundation has created a bill that's called the Kai 11 Bill, and it proposes that parents of student athletes will receive a sheet of information on sudden cardiac arrest and the importance of an EKG test at a physical appointment so that parents can take the necessary steps to get their child tested, and hopefully, no other kids will have to tragically pass away like Kai did, and we can save lives. The bill was heard in front of the Senate on Tuesday, February 23rd. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Bryant?
I don't know if you guys can answer that, but, you know, that significantly large scholarship, that must be, almost be a record for being, coming out of...
Mr. Deets, it has to be close to one of your boys, right? Yeah, it's definitely up there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it gets a, North has done a great job this year. It's, you know, it's been a challenging year, but we've made it so far, and I'm sure we'll finish strong. And, you know, scholarships are coming, and we just got great schools, and North is one of those great schools. So, thank you for presenting again.
Thank you.
Nice presentation. Be proud of your scholarship. You don't need anybody else brag about it, I guess.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the presentation.
Other questions for our student reps from North? All right, thank you for sharing.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay, we're now at the section of our meeting where there is an opportunity for our citizens to address us. As has been past practice, we limit the presentation time to three minutes. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Amanda will give you a signal just to have you wrap up in the next 30 seconds. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and participants, please silence your phones if you haven't done so already. We do have two people signed up. Clint Winiger and Bert Kreitlow. Hi, Clint.
How you doing tonight? Let me start, first of all, the Avid program. I've been a member of South community for a long time and seen a lot of kids go through there, and it's been a great program for school. My daughter's actually part of that program this year as a freshman at South. It'd be interesting to see how the kids in that program did during our failed first semester experiment. And that's one of the reasons I'm here today, is I'm happy our kids are back in school full-time, but we know that those kids were behind and terribly behind, even at the last two TNL meetings ago when you talked about semester progress. Some improvement at one school, but not the other two. So, what is the plan for bringing these kids back up to speed? We can't just go, "Hey, we're back in school, everything's good now," because we know they're behind. So, we need a clear and coherent plan to get these kids back up to speed where they belong, and that's what they deserve. That's going to take leadership, starting at this board, and then also with the administration. Now, implementation's going to trickle down to families, students, teachers, principals, but the direction has to come from our leadership here. So, do we have a plan? I'd like to see one if we do. But then I also like to see some metrics tied to that that are produced on a regular basis, so it's a transparent process to the community, saying, "Here's what we're doing to improve the environment for your kids, to improve their education." We need measurable progress. We spend a lot of time on metrics, on COVID this, COVID that, COVID that, but what about the kids that really matter? the kids that really matter in their performance? We should have regular metrics that are visible to all of us in the community, not just at this board level, but parents, students, and everybody else. We deserve that right to know where we're going. It should be transparent, like I said, and available to the public. Now, I have one other comment I'd like to make. Mr. Como, you first started off by saying we need to be respectful in our comments. I would agree. In the 10 months I've been coming to most of the board meetings, I think parents have been very respectful, but that respect goes two ways, right? I can't believe that...I went on the Journal Sentinel, and I saw one of the board members trying to take credit for getting our kids back into school. The same board member, Mr. O'Brien, that fought every single meeting. If you go back through those tapes, probably spent the most time in keeping our kids out of school. You don't get the right then to take the credit for getting our kids back into school. That's not fair. It's not fair to those kids. It's not fair to the parents. It's not fair to the community. You voted against putting our kids back in school. Stand by that vote. Stand by your conviction. Don't try to turn it now and say you were a leader there. You know, you made the comment that kids, you go against science. You've been in science your whole life. Well, science since last spring has showed that kids in school is not super spreading problem.
Thank you, Clint.
Right? So, my time up. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ah, Bert.
Good evening.
Welcome, Bert.
Yeah. Thanks so much for having me. I just wanted to take a very short time to say some things. I've been reading the news, it's prompted me to come, and I think say things that are fairly obvious, but I didn't see those perspectives enough. Number one, I support teachers. I'm grateful for the work that they do, and I don't think they get compensated or supported enough. Number two, I support the teaching of race and the theories of race in especially secondary education. I think, you know, it shouldn't need to be said that in the task of educating, you should open students to perspectives, not try and shield them from perspectives. Number three, again, to state the obvious, this pandemic we're hopefully coming out of the next few months was a crisis. It was a historic event, and I don't envy, I also don't begrudge, you know, bodies, government bodies, in adapting and adjusting to the pandemic. I don't...it's, like I said, I don't envy them. It was very hard to make those adjustments, and I think mistakes were inevitable, and it's easier to, rather than propose how to adjust, to stand back and snipe. So, those are my three statements.
Okay, thank you, Bert.
Just less than my time. Any questions or comments?
We do not interact, Bert.
Oh, I see, okay.
You get to present to us, yes.
These are things that shouldn't need to be said, but I came to say them. Thank you for your work.
Okay, moving on to the approval part of our meeting. We do have three minutes, sets of minutes for your consideration. On February 10th, we had a regular board meeting. We also had an executive session that evening. And then on February 25th, we had an executive session focused on an expulsion panel. Is there any motion to approve these minutes? Ms. Voight?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
Standing by Mr. Boengard. Discussion changes? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. And moving on to our communications part of our meeting, Dr. Seaver, any communications to report out?
Yes, Mr. Como, I do have a few, and they are in the athletic realm for our high schools. So, from the Classic Eight Conference, Waukesha South was the recipient of the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for wrestling, so we're proud of them. At Waukesha North, they were the recipient of the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award for both boys' basketball and boys' swim. And at Waukesha West High School, they were the Classic Eight Conference Sportsmanship Award winner for both wrestling and girls' basketball. So, certainly, congratulations to Mr. Schley, Mr. Sobrinsky, Mr. Lemieux, and all the coaches and all of the student athletes. Thank you.
Dr. Seaver, do you know how that determination is made? Is there like a nomination process, or how's that work? We do have a fair number of teams that are good sports and do get recognized. I'm just wondering what that process might be.
It says the award is presented based on rankings submitted for each sport by each member school. And so, I have a summary document that shows how each school voted, and I think it comes down to achieving a certain benchmark that allows you then to elevate to that award level, to my understanding.
Okay, excellent.
What's a recognition by your peers and the teams you compete against, which is quite valuable?
Yes, that is. Thank you. Appreciate you sharing that. And Mrs. Voight, do we have a report on the Waukesha Education Foundation?
We do, Mr. President.
Thank you.
The Waukesha Education Foundation wants to extend a sincere thank you for the gift from the School District of Waukesha in the amount of $34,617.54 to be invested to benefit students. The gift originated from the DeLong Foundation, a foundation which was associated with Waukesha Engine. The foundation has now dissolved, and the funds were dispersed to other organizations, including the School District of Waukesha. A new endowed scholarship fund, the Chris Rakonowski Memorial Scholarship, has been established with a targeted $1,000 annual scholarship to be given to a deserving student at Waukesha North High School. Chris was a North graduate who recently passed away at the age of 51. His parents' legacy gift of $26,000 will begin an annual scholarship this spring with $25,000 invested into the endowed fund as a permanent memorial for Chris. The new Waukesha Education Foundation Leadership Fund has been officially established with the fund agreements being signed. A special thank you to one of our school board members who heard my announcement last month and was the first to contribute a special matching gift fund. The foundation will be rolling out a special outreach for this further donation soon, but I had to acknowledge the quick response from the board. So, thank you to whoever was the one who gave that donation. I have three sponsorship renewals worth noting. $1,000 from HNI for the renewal as a silver annual sponsor. $2,500 received from SPX Transformer Solutions for their sponsorship renewal. Thank you to SPX for going from silver to gold annual sponsorship of this year. And I have to add that I was impressed to see they also have given two gifts in our later documents here. We have to be so thankful to our support from the community, from organizations like SPX Transformer Solutions. And Generex upgrade to the $5,000 platinum level was celebrated with a virtual check presentation last week. Generex generous sponsorship support was featured in the March 3 Freeman and shared on our website and social media. Thank you to all who participated in the Eating for a Good Cause I talked about last month by going to Saz's Fish Fry at Western Lakes. We had a great turnout, especially for drive-through orders, and we earned $669.28. So, thank you very much for Eating for a Good Cause. The staff Casual for Cause has been extended until spring break, and so far, $14,926 has been raised, which is just amazing. Those funds, we rolled right into our distribution for grants this year. So, that's just so really good to see the support of the staff for that program. The 2021 grant applications are starting to come in to the grant site that went live on February 15th, and grant applications will be accepted until April 9th. The Waukesha Education Foundation Spring Wellness Event is coming soon. It's been transformed. It's not just a walk or run any longer, but we're kicking off the Move Forward Wellness Event on 3/28. It's a unique blend of community outreach and free programming, as well as competition between the schools to encourage and track those movement minutes. Help us move forward by visiting our website and clicking on the events link, and then the Move Forward Event for more information. We encourage the board to get involved and share this with your family and your friends. The event will run through April 25th. There's no cost to participate, thanks to the many sponsors that are making this event possible. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Voight. And moving on to our charter, school, and program report given by Mr. Boengard.
Thank you. I received some information from Jason Smith on E-Achieve that I found interesting. E-Achieve presence increased on the School District of Waukesha website to help open enrollment and School District of Waukesha families facing a decision for the next year. The resources include a video about elementary education, a slide program for secondary education, and frequency asked questions for School District families. And this isn't on your script there, Joe, because I got it right...I got an email right before we came over here. Mary Jo actually told me the best way for you to approach this is when you get to the School District of Waukesha website, just click on where it's...the little icon that says E-Achieve. It'll lead you to all of these steps. And it's just a very positive way for our families to think about what they want to do over the next school year. Also, from E-Achieve, I got a message about their MAP testing completed remotely for grades K through 10 students with approximately 70% participation to date. A different subject, I just called this a college connection. One of our North High School students will be graduating from college at WCTC before she graduates from North High School. Yes, I know this has happened before. The real message here is the opportunity that our students have to use options such as dual credit, Start College Now, and the youth apprenticeship programs. Our North High School student, Nicole Chessman, and you will have a thing on your desk about this, Nicole earned 60-plus college credits while in high school and is able to use those towards her graduation at WCTC and moving on into the business world. You probably might remember her as being a visitor here, I think, in January.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Boengard. I did get a chance to go out to look at some of the E-Achieve videos, and there's a welcoming video by Principal Smith, and it was recorded while he was still interim principal. So, I almost called him and said, hey, you gotta do the whole thing over, but, you know, he probably would have just edited, so. It's good information, though, so I encourage anyone interested in E-Achieve to go out and, you know, research that, and there's a ton of information out there for you, so. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Boengard. Okay, we're at the point in our meeting where we are in consideration of COVID-19 protocol. We did have a workshop on that recently to learn some more factual information about that, and this is a discussion and potentially an action item this evening. And I think we're going to start with Dr. Seaver, just kind of framing this for us a bit.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Como. So, as he said, we appreciated the opportunity to have the workshop with you. That's two weeks ago to the day, February 24th. Hard to believe, but that was great, and what we thought we would do is Dr. Cook is going to just walk you through a little summary of that workshop that will then lead you into the discussion, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that we can.
Thank you, everyone. So, just wanted to review a little bit what we talked about two weeks ago, and see where the district is at. With the workshop a couple of weeks ago, we kind of went through the whole history of this year. But more recently, we focused on implementing the updated guidance from the CDC from December, in which the quarantine period for students was shortened to a seven and a 10-day quarantine period. And then being fever-free after a seven-day quarantine period, days six and seven, students could get a COVID test if they were negative, they could return to school on day eight. So, we've implemented those new procedures this year. We followed right along with where the CDC is. And we've implemented something that, you know, whether...we know that it is resulting in fewer students being out for a long period of time. That is, that's been where we've been. The guidelines that we're using, we're following CDC and DHS guidance, where the students would be placed on quarantine if they're in close contact, meaning that they were within six feet of someone for 15 or more minutes over the course of a day. How this plays out in school, if you were to think of a secondary classroom where students are in desks and rows, the COVID-positive student would be in school at the secondary level, say, very first period, and they would be within six feet of, say, two students or three students. We would have three close contacts potentially during that first period. Second period of the day, you might have two or three more students, so one student then is at six, and then that just moves forward over the course of the day, each period of the day, which can result in one student, you know, impacting, say, 10 to 20 students, just based off of how the classrooms were set up. Similarly, at the elementary level, you could get a student in a pod who, you know, is sitting in a group of four. Those students could be impacted if they were positive. If they interact or if they mix during instructional periods, you could have one student now start to impact a whole class. Similarly, if a staff member were ill and was teaching in those small groups, they then could continue to have that contact and impact a larger group of kids. So, we use those close-contact guidelines, and that's how it has played out in the schools here. So, you can see that spelled out here on this slide here. We do have a contact tracing team. They've been heavily involved with monitoring this. Our school nurses have been involved with that, and our school nurses have maintained close contact with Waukesha County this school year. From a numbers standpoint, from the beginning of the year through November, you can see high rates of student infection and staff infection, and then the number of students on quarantine and the number of staff on quarantine was substantially higher. Since January, the first of the year, we use December here when the guidance changed, you can see that the number is not quite half, a little bit more than half of where we've been at during that first three months of the year into that second three months of the school year. These numbers are high. There's no doubt about it. Seeing, you know, 7,600 quarantines is a lot of students quarantined. Sometimes, that may not represent, though, 7,600 students in total. Some students in that count could have been affected multiple times, which makes the situation felt very difficult, I guess, to manage, but it's still been something that we've been working towards. What I'd like to point out, though, in the next few slides here, is the trend that this has followed over the course of the entire school year. This first slide represents, month by month, the number of students who have been isolated in quarantine. The quarantines are in the red line, the isolations are in the blue line, and you can see then that over the course of the school year, we had a very high number in, you know, between October and December. We came back in January. We had a lot of students sick in January, not as many quarantines as a result of it. A lot of that was a result of things that happened over the winter break. And you can see that those numbers have trended downwards up until this point in March. The slide is updated this morning. And the same thing then holds true for staff. Please also note that the scale on these slides is...so that we could actually show graph here. Prior slide scaled thousands, but the current slide is scaled by twenties. But again, you can see that the same trend held true for staff. We had more staff sick between October and December, and that number has trailed down as the school year has moved forward. And the chart just represents everybody in the same group. Next slide that I have here, we talked about it a while back, represents where we were at in the community at this time. And you can see that between the months of October and January, the base burden in the community was high. So, what was happening in the community was also then in the county, was also then represented in our schools, which is why we ended up quarantining more students because there were more close contacts. We have followed, going back now several months, our transition. I'll have to pull that in a little bit. We followed the transition requirements that had been on our... We followed the transition requirements that had been on our district webpage. But the transition requirements that we talked about, I believe it was in December and January, talked about what would start to shift learning levels. It was something that we monitored very closely. And if you go to our webpage, hopefully this will pull up in a moment, but if you go on our webpage, you can see a dial on the front webpage. And you can see where we are at. We've got it broken down, green, yellow, and red, as far as areas of concern. And at the moment, we've only been hitting one, consistently, we've only been hitting one of those indicators that we set out in our transition plan, and that is the substitute teacher fill rate. Otherwise, we have not been hitting an indicator from a community spread standpoint, from a number of students that have been isolated in quarantine, from a number of staff illness. So we've stayed in that low range on there, going back now, going back now to the better part of January through... Yep? What's that? Oh, thank you, sir. That is what I'm referring to there. And so we've been monitoring where we're at. Green, and I'm not going to make an argument on level of safety. This is strictly based off of the indicators that we have set out. We have consistently had that one indicator, which is generally that sub-fill rate over the past several months. So from a stability level and how things are operating in schools, we're not getting into that discussion, are we in the right learning model right now? That is supported by our data that we are in the right learning model right now. We are managing this on a day-to-day basis in our schools. We do continue to have to quarantine. The last thing that I'd like to show you... Dr. Seaver. This is something that we touched upon, we touched upon at our workshop, and we followed up with some information from our insurance company a week, week and a half ago or so. You know, essentially, the CDC right now is recommending the six feet for the 15 cumulative minutes with or without a cloth face covering. The Department of Health Services, that's our state DHS, they are recommending that we follow the CDC guidelines. Waukesha County Health and Human Services has adopted the CDC and DHS guidelines. And then M3, our insurance carrier, put out that memo a week and a half ago that said, you know, we recommend at this time that you stay with the local and the state guidance that you're being provided by your health departments. So that's, you know, kind of the quarantine process in a nutshell right now, what we've been doing, where we're at. Certainly available for questions if you're...
Mr. Ryan.
Could you go back to Slide 3? So the bottom two sentences that relate to testing positive and vaccination, that's new?
The 90 days was implemented back in December. So if you had COVID in the recovery, the guidance changed back in December to say you had a 90-day window that you wouldn't have to quarantine. And so we implemented that at the time. The vaccination is, that guidance seems to be, I don't want to say changing, but it's evolving, I guess, as we go forward as to what your protection was. And I think the original guidance on the vaccine was 90 days as well, but that does seem to be being adjusted as the days move forward and more and more folks get vaccinated than they are.
So essentially, they're treating vaccination almost like having COVID.
Correct. Two weeks after your second shot or after you're fully vaccinated, now with this Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, they're treating it as if you were COVID-positive. I did hear some information that, you know, in the next several months, one of the things that has happened with COVID is, because it was new, it almost seems like the information you get, they're giving you half the credit for it. You know, so if you're six months out, they give you a few months' credit for, like this 90-day period. The longer we get away, the more information we have, it seems that these guidelines are being restricted. If you remember, the original guidance for a vaccinated person was that you should still wear a mask. I think it was at the end of last week, the CDC updated that guidance and said, you know, in within like a family group, you don't have to have a mask on whether people are vaccinated or not. So you're starting to see small group guidance skip a block. That then can, you know, I think is going to continue to evolve as we go into the summer and then prepare for next fall.
Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand if we are quarantining at the rate that we need to be. My understanding of quarantining is it is essentially a mitigation effort. You find out a student has tested positive. The worry is that student who has tested positive has transmitted to those within close contact.
Correct.
So we quarantine those within close contact. The process has gotten much better. The numbers have gone down, despite the fact that we now have twice as many kids in schools. Good. I think the way we measure that, if it's necessary, is you look at, okay, when those students were quarantined because of that close contact positive student, how many of those have subsequently tested positive and were traced back to that contact in the classroom that we're actually worried about? Since January, I think there's been 1,100 students quarantined. Five have tested positive from, is traced back to their district, close contact. I understand that, but how does this cause anybody to reach a conclusion, except we're by far over-quarantining our kids? How do we justify quarantining 1,100 kids when only five have shown that the contact in the schools has resulted in them becoming positive? We have all these mitigation efforts. They're working.
Oh, so if you're asking if we're over-quarantining, we're applying the definition of close contact in the classroom. Is the recommended definition a correct procedure that we would use?
I'm not asking that, though. I'm sorry to interrupt you, because we're going to, I think we're going to slip back into what the CDC says, CDC says in DHS. I'm just saying, a purely numbers issue. Our concern is trying to keep as many kids in the classroom as possible, not over-quarantining them. So if we're not going to look at them, because I consider that punting, if our goal is to keep the kids in the classroom and not follow CDC as, you know, telling us what to do, how does that, without staying in those numbers, how is that justified? Five kids were basically stopped from being infected because we quarantined 1,100? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but how does this make sense?
They're also preventing me from giving you the answer that you're saying we're using the CDC. Well, we are using the CDC. So you're saying, how do you justify it? Well, justification is the CDC said, this is the procedure you should follow. So we're following. No, and until that gets adjusted, or there is other guidance for us, those then would be the rules that we would follow. So when the CDC says this is what you should do, the state says this is what you should do, the county says this is what you should do, in the end, if you are within six feet of people for 15 minutes or more, you know, there's not a default closing classroom, for instance. So say, for instance, the elementary classroom that I referenced before, where a teacher, for instance, is in close contact, the teacher is the one who's sick. And the teacher, over the course of a two-day period, works in a small group literacy model, where they're going from, you know, small table group to small table group, and they're doing mini lesson after mini lesson of literacy in the classroom. And then they're in the classroom, the masks come off, and the kids are lunching. So you are now establishing close contacts across that classroom. Similarly, at the secondary level, from the student who, you know, if you've had an opportunity to be in our schools this year, get into the middle schools, you know, right now, where you get 25 or 30 kids into a classroom that is right around 900 square feet, you know, you get kids who come in and they sit down and they stay at their desks, you're still going to have two or three kids that are going to be in that close range. And then you multiply that over the course of six periods of the day.
I get that. I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but we're... The worry is that those positive students are going to infect other students in the classroom because of close contact. I don't disagree with anything you said about the instructional model and the contact, but it's simply not happening. It's happened for five students since we've come back full face-to-face and double the amount of students. It's simply not happening. Statistically, someone gave us the numbers, it's 0.4%. Not 4%, 0.4%. I'm not trying to jump at you, I'm just trying to initiate a discussion. So those concerns you're raising, they're not happening.
But I'm not, I'm...
You're not raising, you're pointing...
Right, I'm just reiterating the guidance that we've been given.
Right, and I'm saying, essentially, not to be short, so what? What CDC says, DHS says, it's not that I don't care. It's, our job is not to just follow CDC and DHS. Our job is to make sure our kids stay in the classroom as much as they can, we keep them as reasonably safe as possible, and deliver the best education. Five kids, 1,100 kids quarantined, I just don't see that as justified.
I had seen Diane's hand first. Mrs. Boyd.
Thank you.
And then Bill.
You mentioned the idea of the two doses there. With Johnson &amp; Johnson, do we have an idea about when that's supposed to be in effect, and they would not have to be quarantined either?
It was two weeks after the injection.
Two weeks after the injection. Because I think that's going to have a huge impact on our staff, you know, including the bus drivers and the cooks and everybody else. Once they're vaccinated, it's going to have a huge impact on the number of quarantines that are necessary.
Mr. Bunker.
I guess I was thinking about what Cory was saying, and it seems to me that that's a positive thing that has happened. We've had a number of people quarantined, and we've been able to keep the isolation down to a minimum, as opposed to loosening up on the quarantine and seeing what happens. You know, as again, I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago when we had our other meeting, this whole history we've been through for the last 12 months now was a new thing for us to deal with. And I think we had to deal with it in as conservative a matter as we could. And I don't see a danger in the fact that we've had some kids quarantined and we've kept the isolation rate very low. And if you do the chart, looking at the charts, we are now moving in a place where, yes, the current quarantine level is getting very close to the isolation level. And that's, to me, that's a positive thing, that we have developed and done, managed over the 12 months. You know, I'm not, you know, thinking that we should apologize for anything that happened with something that was very difficult to deal with. And I think we've done a good job in managing it to this point. I think there's been a lot of intelligence out there between the CDC and the DHS. Those are the pros, and those are the people we need to listen to. So that's my take on it.
Mrs. Rynicek.
Thank you. I think Dr. Cook's slides show the math. I think that they're right on, because people were fearful that when we went back to school, things were going to spike. Everybody's back in school, our numbers are going to spike. That's what's going to happen. And with all of these graphs, that's the opposite of what happened. It's been down. And so what you're saying is, what's happening is, in our classrooms, we are closer than six feet, and kids do have their masks off. And so if someone did have COVID, whether it was a teacher or a student, and was sent home, and then the class was sent home, 0.7% are coming back as positive that were, that got it from close contact at school. So that's not one in five, or one in 10, or one in 100, it's less than that. So that just tells me that we can lighten that up, and it doesn't have to be six feet anymore. It can be less than six feet, because we're already doing that. And the data is showing that it's not turning into more cases. I feel like I've not heard, we just have a line here of people screaming at us, "Follow the science, follow the science." They had windows out the windows, they had big boards, "Follow the science." They had Facebook pages, "Follow the science." I was told my, they were going to throw eggs at my house, the "Follow the Science" people from the teachers' union. I don't, I hear crickets now, because the science is telling us what we're seeing. We have the science, we have the data. So I think we should use it.
Mr. O'Brien.
First, I want to say a couple of things. I own every board I've ever taken in this board, some of which are wrong, okay, like every board member. And we have eight leaders on this board. Not more, there's eight, okay? Not everybody follows whoever's leading, like right now, Mr. Montiel has a position that he's trying to lead on. Another thing is that I try to listen to what people who I may be uncomfortable with what they're saying about their position. And I did take the time to watch the PowerPoint presentation before I was asked to. And I can find myself in agreement with a lot of what's in that presentation. I can find myself in agreement with a lot of what Mr. Montiel says about the numbers, because the numbers don't lie. The numbers are the numbers. But the reality is that, you know, we're not infectious disease experts here on this board. And when I go into a business, as I was in businesses today, I was in a number of banks today, all these businesses are following CDC, county guidelines, to try and protect themselves and their customers. The bank, you can't go inside, everything has to be done over the phone until they need your signature, then you can walk inside and sign a few papers, and they want you out right away. Plus, they want to confirm that you haven't been around anybody in close contact. So I'm being quarantined outside the bank, except for when I turn in my signature. So across the board at all these businesses, they're following CDC guidelines. People aren't getting sick, but they're still following them. Why? Because they want to make sure we beat this thing. Yeah, I was excited to go back in January. I let Dr. Seibert know I was excited, I let Mr. Colwell know I was excited that I wanted to go back in January. I thought semester's a little bit earlier, but if Dr. Seibert says it's the time to go back, we're going back. And I've supported the administration every step away on this. Why? Because we're a team. We should be a team. When we voted A and O, I said, let's all get together and make this work. And it's working. But it seems like we always have to debate whether we're going to follow the guidance of the experts or not, or we're just going to look at numbers and say, we know the numbers are what they are, and therefore we should follow those numbers. We're going to beat this thing. We're on the path to beating it. As Ms. Rynicek said, the graphs say that we're heading in the right direction. Next week, we're going to be on to the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is a one-shot vaccine. Two weeks later, we'll have 90 days exemption for quarantines for all that staff, which will be a tremendous benefit in terms of not quarantining kids. And the number-one threat for infection is staff to kids, not kids to staff. So we're on the path to beating this. The only fear the CDC and the DHS has, from my understanding, is a variance. And that's why they're being very conservative right now, because they're not sure how these variants are going to affect us across the country. And they want us to continue to try and protect ourselves until we can get a handle on this. So what I'm trying to say is, there's lots of good reasons to agree with people, but at the end of the day, the experts know best. They should know best. And none of us are the experts. We've got to listen to them.
Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, I respect you and I respect your opinion. I go back to what Ms. Rynicek said. Everything I was told, and everything we were told that would happen negatively, super-spreaders, teachers getting ill and dying, students getting ill and dying, students being incapacitated, hospitalized. I started making a list, I went through all my old emails today, the list is far too long. But I can tell you what I found out about the list, is not a single one of those things happened. We were told by experts, we were told by people who demanded we follow science, that these things will happen. They showed up at my doorstep, grocery store, we all experienced that. There were people in here crying, and that's okay. They were scared. The experts were wrong. They are now coming out and saying, we were wrong, students are not super-spreaders. The transmission rate, which I taught people forever on, the statistics show that transmission rate among kids in schools is almost, I wouldn't say nonexistent, but dramatically less. It's now come out to be true. But I see this, what we're doing is the same thing we did before. They're scared, I get it. They're being overly cautious, I get it. They want to protect from variants and other things coming on, so they say, let's deal with DHS, let's deal with CDC. And I don't know if you can pull up the last slide of your presentation, Dr. Cook. Our job's not to follow CDC, our job is to do what's best for our students. What's missing from this conversation so far, unless I missed it, is this tendency to pull back, be conservative, protect based on what we think may happen. There's an implication that that's okay and it's acceptable. It's not. When we moved to hybrid, any objective assessment of that, despite best efforts by the administration, the board members and teachers, it was an abysmal failure. Kids failed terribly. So my concern and our concern is that we are over quarantining. We're simply doing the same thing on a different level. We're going to rely on the CDC to give us guidance that makes sense? Look at that first point up there. Does that make sense to anybody in this room? The CDC recommends quarantines for individuals who are within six feet of a COVID-positive individual for 15 cumulative minutes, with or without a face covering. They have been slamming the table saying face coverings are necessary. Now they're saying it really doesn't matter as long as you're within six feet for 15 minutes. Those are the people we're relying on to give us guidance for how we educate our kids? I'm not smarter than the CDC. I'm not a scientist. I'm not a biomedical engineer. That doesn't make any sense at all. And we're going to, I think, and I think this is probably a losing thing, but it has to be said, we are going to repeat the same thing we did. The cost and benefit analysis, more kids are going to be out, more kids are going to suffer. We have not learned from our mistakes. And although everybody's exhausted, we're not done. We are going to be COVID, but we're not done.
Ms. Rady?
Thank you. Ms. Montiel, I'm going to attempt to answer your question based off of some conversations that I've had with some school leaders, okay? I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you. I'm just going to share with you some of the conversations that we had. I'm going to read it because I'll forget something if I don't. Okay, so I contacted and spoke with some of our principals. And I explained to them, I said, "This is on our agenda. We're going to be discussing this." And I asked, one of the questions that was asked at our board work session, "Why are, in some schools, we're taking, we're quarantining a whole class and another school on the other side of town is only maybe taking out five or six of those students? Why is this happening? Are they doing something right or is this one not doing as right?" You know, that was the question I posed. The answer was, well, generalized answer is, it just depends on the day. It depends on the student or the staff member who was sick. The, each classroom, each infection had a different circumstance. So the principals and the tracers worked through the procedures that were put in place. And the number of students that were quarantined were justified based off of that work. The decisions were based off of the individual circumstance. Now, the numbers that you're giving, so the percentage of five out of 1,100 students across the district is low. Yes, I agree with that. The number, that number doesn't lie. But the number of one out of 20 or 22 students that are in one classroom, that ratio then becomes very high. So across the whole district, yeah, that number looks really low. But if you're, if you zero in on that one individual classroom, then that percentage rate is, jumps a lot higher. And that would justify why they would quarantine a whole class versus only a handful. It's, it's, each individual circumstance has very specific and distinct circumstances around it. I don't know if that helps you at all, but that's just some of the conversations I've had.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yeah, I, I have said this entire time, I think we're over quarantining. That hasn't changed. That's still my belief. I think that the five in 1,100 is just overkill. But what, what really made me think is last week, Governor Evers let us know in a press conference that the school districts are on their own. His words. In getting the kids back and keeping them in school. That's what he said last week. So if we're on our own, I suggest that we start leading and, and changing these quarantines to keep our kids back in, in school. We do have to quarantine. There's no, there's no two ways about it. But we do not have to quarantine to the level that we are doing it right now. So it has been my belief the entire school year and it continues to be my belief now and going forward.
Ms. Ryancheck?
Thank you. Back to what Amanda said, Ms. Rady. But that's, I, I hear what you're saying. But that still doesn't change the amount of kids that are then resulting in having COVID from that outbreak in that classroom, whether it's seven kids in a group or whether it's an entire classroom. That ratio still proves that there are kids that are around other kids that have COVID or a teacher that has COVID that are not getting COVID. And then after the whole quarantine period of 10 days, they still haven't developed COVID. It's, I mean, not any, but the, the percentage that then do after the quarantine, and that's, that's what we're talking about is the quarantine period. It's not resulting in positive cases.
Sure.
Not all the quarantines are 10 days. Per our accepted changes of the CDC, they can be assured it is eight days. If a student, if a student is told that their contact, they're, they've been exposed on, say, a Wednesday, their traces are going to go back two days. They are allowed to test by day six or seven if they're showing no symptoms. So that could be a Saturday. And then they would have Sunday. And if they had tested negative with their rapid test because of no symptoms, they're only out of school three days, Thursday and Friday. And they can be back on school on Monday. So not all of them are 10, are 10 days.
Correct, if they can get a test. I had a girl sit in my chair, sorry. I had a girl sit in my chair, a teenager. She said, "My brother went into the office, he had a headache. They told him he, it was a symptom of COVID. He had to go home and so did I." They were home for 10 days, came back to school for one day and she got sent home again and quarantined because someone in her class had COVID and the whole class got sent home, but she wasn't even there. And she tried to say, "I wasn't even there." And they said, "It's, it's too difficult to figure that out. You're, you're in the classroom, the teacher said you're there." Just had to go home for another 10 days. We do have excessive situations and quarantines. I wanted to say this. When we gave the choice to the families, the people, the children to choose if they wanted to be home virtually and learn virtually, we gave them that choice and they, they've taken that. We gave them two choices, the achieve or virtual. And now it's changed and, anyway. We're not giving the kids and families who have chosen face-to-face instruction a fair face-to-face instruction if we're over quarantining. We're taking that away from them. We're taking it away from the athletes. And it's not just school, it's athletics. It's all of the pubs that they have after school. And then they're quarantining in their house and they can't do things outside the house if they're really following it. We're taking a lot away from the kids that wanted to be face-to-face, whether the ones that wanted to be at home and learn virtually, if it was better for the parent situation or the kids. Those kids are still doing that. If they didn't feel safe, they could be at home. But we're taking it away from the other ones that want to be face-to-face. And I get that we need something, but this is just, it's too much at this point. And our data shows that. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Look, I've, I've always been in favor of us doing everything we can to reduce the amount of quarantine in terms of how we protect kids, how we identify them, even to the point where I've even said it with Mr. Montiel. If you want, if you want us to go together and talk to the county about trying to give us more leeway on quarantines, I'm all for it. And I'm all for, even if we create a motion as a board sometime in the future where we say we're really concerned about these quarantines and we'd like them to be reduced for these reasons, okay? So I've never had a problem with saying we should try to reduce quarantines subject to CDC guidelines. I'm hoping that as we get this vaccination thing going, that the whole idea of quarantining kids will drop, especially healthy kids, will drop away. And that may be a false hope, but that's what I would advocate for with our health authorities because student-to-student transfer is minimal, okay? It's staff-to-student that we need to be most concerned about. And as we quarantine our, as we vaccinate our staff, which we're going full speed ahead with, we'll be using mostly Johnson &amp; Johnson one-shot vaccines. We've got 1,600 on order and they're here. And we're going to get everybody vaccinated. And our staff has agreed, 88% say they want to be vaccinated, which is an extremely high ratio. Masks work. We talked about stuff, you know, let's not go back months, but there was a time when people didn't even want to wear a mask. Well, they work. They protected us. So, so is plexiglass, so is isolation, so is distance. And so does a better understanding of how transmission happens, okay? And we have that, as you've elaborated, Mr. Montiel. But the bottom line is, we're on the right path. I want to know, is there any other school district in the state that has told, that has told their county health departments they don't know what they're doing?
Do we have an answer to that? Does anyone have an answer to that? Dr. Cook or Dr. Seibert, Darren, anybody? I'm not aware of any.
Ms. Montiel?
No, I'm not aware of any. And I can flippant, I don't care. It's, we don't lead by following other people. There's two different conversations going on here, in my opinion. One conversation is, are we applying our model of quarantining appropriately? Yes, and it's getting better. It's getting better. My conversation, other conversation is, our model's broken. It's unnecessary, it's unwarranted. And the only way we can really find out if we really need to quarantine to the extent we are is the exact numbers we're talking about. Because the worry is exactly what I talked about. An infected student is going to infect the, the other students who are within close contact. How do we possibly know that? Well, we pull those students out, we quarantine them. And then we say, of those kids who we worry would be infected because of the close contact, how many? That's that how important that 1,100 number is. Because we have said, we pulled out 1,100 kids that we were worried about would be infected. Five have been infected. Think of the lost hours, instructional hours. Think of all that that's happened. It's just not worth it. It's not worth it. There's another point, but it escapes me.
I do, I do think we need to, as a board, we wear many hats. And I think, to add to the conversation, this point was brought up during the presentation, but I, I would like to come back to it and emphasize it for your consideration. Can we lighten up the quarantines? Sure. Do we have the power to do that? Absolutely. This board, it resides within our capacity to do that. So that's what we're debating here. But we have, via our attorneys and our liability insurance company, they've come out within the last couple of weeks. It was a little sooner for the advice from Bilavetta. We all received the information from our attorneys. And I'm not going to list out all of the analysis that they've done. But in the conclusion from Bilavetta, I'm quoting now, "There is an increased risk of liability to the district for personal injury or negligence claims, workers' compensation claims and health and safety grievances and complaints resulting from implementing close contact quarantine protocols that are not approved by Waukesha County Health Department and are contrary to CDC, DHS and the local health department recommendations." I think we need to keep that in mind here. There's, there is risk to loosening up the quarantines. Let me just share with you a summary from our, our liability insurance company. Their, their final statement here, in their takeaway statement is, with, with, with that in mind, which was the stuff above, "Employers would be well-served by continuing to monitor and implement the latest guidance from federal, state and local health departments regarding the pandemic." And that was just issued within the last couple of weeks. And, you know, we turn to these professionals for a reason. We do need to take this into consideration. So the way I look at this is if we do go down the road of loosening the quarantine guidelines not based upon federal, state and local entities, we will run an increased risk. Are we willing to take that risk to potentially have liability brought against us? Not sure if I'm willing to do that.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. I did read that memo. You're not wrong. It was their conclusion. But what they skip over and they talk about really briefly is that the cap for damages, $20 per the whole entity, is $50,000, which is not cheap. If you compare that to the hours lost to students, what feels cheaper? I don't know if you can compare, but they also skip over very lightly and talk about, look, you have to show that there's a nexus between the action and inaction taken by the board or the entity and the damages. And what you have to show? You have to show that because of what 2011, by the consensus, we made a public policy decision, you have to look through the unit that the, the district that has, then you have to look at is Waukesha County, assume that the maximum recovery is $50,000. And then how can you possibly enact someone getting COVID to the school? Your exposure at school. And then the first, the terms that argue is, look, 1,100, 1,100 kids were quarantined. Fine. You know, boy, that's a very tough case to make. And the insurance company, you're actually right. And it's not directed at you, but more at them. Of course they're going to say that. They don't want to pay the claim. And they don't want to hire their own attorneys to cover us. So those are real concerns, but in my book there, in a way, those concerns, the damage that quarantines are dealing, the human damage that comes out of schools will be, respectively to, it's not a concern that more than you change.
How many, can you bring up the slide or does someone have the information? How many kids are isolated now? How many staff are isolated now? How many are quarantined? Today?
I think it's about 100. Five students are... There are 13 students right now that are isolated. 116 right now quarantined. Two staff members right now that are isolated. I might miss them.
Could you hear them or no?
No.
Could you do it again, Joe?
13 students isolated, 116 on quarantine. And two staff isolated, 12 quarantined.
Would you also bring up the, the slide that overall shows all the, the graph to get, that shows everybody together? Yeah, this one. And that, I think, is what you were trying to say, Mr. Baumgart? Is this was a... What you were saying, oh. What you were saying before, Mr. Baumgart, is, is that red line's coming closer to the other lines that deal with isolation, right? The blue line, is that right? Isolations are blue, quarantines are red. We're narrowing that gap. And there's probably several reasons for that, including we're getting through this. We're working through this. And to me, what this shows is what we're doing is working. I mean, I think that was the observation you were trying to make, Mr. Baumgart.
Mrs. Ryancheck?
Thank you. I think, I want to say, what we're doing is working. I think of our test boards. I think of what happens when they feel like they're toxic or when they feel, this is a trick about their academics, it helps about their emotional state when they're at home and they can't be at school and you're in the room. Because we're looking at what you believe and the Waukesha county line. So what's helpful in these, in these organizations, that's one leader. And that's what we do. And then our, our governor says, "Any reasonable difference can make their own decision." So if you're going to pick and choose, yes, we're going to... So if you're going to pick and choose, yes, we're going to follow these. But we do have over here, these that are saying, this is...
Hey, my, my comment was dealing with, our mitigation efforts were working. So, Mr. O'Brien?
You know, sometimes it frustrates me to hear stuff being taken out of context. And, and the governor's comment is related to decisions on going back face-to-face or not, right? It's not about quarantines. He's not asking to make our own decisions about quarantines. He's about whether you go back face-to-face instruction. You know? And as I said, you know, and I'm proud of the 8-0 vote, which, you know, there's eight leaders on this board, that we made the decision to go back face-to-face in January. I'm proud of that vote. I'm also comfortable that we were careful, in the votes I took previously, that we were careful because of that November spike. You know? And the river spike told us, as we came down from that, that's what made me feel comfortable with going back face-to-face. Because I know that we were able to make it through November, and we were heading downward from that point. So going back face-to-face early was because of that chart and also the chart with all the blocks. So, we've been doing, we've been leading the state in face-to-face instruction for a district of our situation. We're not leading the county. If you look at all the other school districts, many of them have had more face-to-face than us. But we still have a higher COVID rate, even though it's low versus our historical, than some of the other schools around us. I know Meskeagle is doing quite well in terms of very few infections and very few quarantines. But they're still following the guidelines. So, I'm proud of where we've been. I don't think our kids and our staff are not going to be able to recover over the next three, four months. And we are talking strategies to help them. We're not ignoring the fact that these kids need help. We had a talk during HR about extra help that we could offer. And we had a talk during TNL about extra help that we can offer. So, it's not like we're turning to back on the kids who have struggled. We're going to try and help them. And we have the kind of staff that can help them. But walking away from the guidance and saying we're not going to be part of the team, because this is being part of the team when you follow what the county's telling you to do. And just like every other school district's following what the county's telling them to do, you're part of the team. I like being part of the team. I like 8-0 votes on these critical issues. I think it's great when you do that.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. The point I forgot before, Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien, was, it's kind of go to the county. Families have gone to county executive. He said it's a local decision. He's not stepping in. One of the first things we talked about, and one of the first public meetings we had, is this question. How do we best educate our kids and keep everybody as reasonably safe as possible? The first thing is, how do we best educate kids? Then we keep them as reasonably safe as possible. What frustrates me is the county says, here's our guidelines. And then we go to them, so we need some help, we need some direction. Nope, it's a local school district. So Mr. McCaffrey is saying, the governor said the same thing, I'm not stepping in. Not going to shut down schools, I'm not stepping in. Part of the team, I get it. It's always great to have consensus, you have unanimous vote, because it sends a clear message. But I don't want to use that to give up on what we think is the wrong thing. Damage is just being done. And we can't help kids if they're not in school. We just can't. There was some discussion about sending social workers to houses and tutors and stuff some time ago. I don't think that ever happened. And as far as the experts and the guidelines, the first thing I thought and others in this area thought was the test positivity rate was going to be 5%. And those above that were shutting down schools. And one of the first reopening committee meetings, there was a healthcare professional, countywide nurse. And I asked her specifically, are we ever going to get above or get below 5%? No, as I asked, brought that up at board meeting. That was no longer the standard. That was the guidance. And you know what? I looked at the numbers. We never got below 5%. We would have followed the first expert's advice. Whoever came up with that 5%, our kids never would have been in school. So that's where I'm coming at.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Joe, the majority of the, or can you give me an idea of the quarantines that we have, the students that we have quarantined? Were most of those quarantines from teacher content or student content?
I would say at the moment that's a bold split. We've had some situations where the teacher has triggered the class-wide. So, you know, if you project ourselves off in a couple of weeks, if all of our staff, the vast, vast majority of our staff are vaccinated, we won't be running into that situation when the teacher is triggering the quarantines. We have had the situation, though, at the secondary level, where, like I mentioned before, where, you know, one kid with three close contacts over six periods of the day, that does result in a larger number. And so we have had that as well. You know, just, I don't know if it's pertinent information or not, we have had about 1,100 people sick with COVID in our district.
Between our teachers and our students?
800, I think it was about 870 kids. And I think it was about near 300 staff have been COVID-positive. And above the, you know, what do we have, 14,000 people who are connected to us on a day-to-day basis? Teachers, the whole business? You know, that's, that's really the positivity rate in our system. Yeah, and when you look at that chart, the bulk of that illness happened in and around the same time. And many of those contacts happened, you know, the illness was not contracted in school. The illness was contracted outside, but that is the reality. When you look at other school districts, even in the county, even in the county that are not our size, but, you know, maybe they're 65% our size, they've had a third of the kids sick. But we have had more kids test positive for COVID in Waukesha than other, other schools.
No, for sure.
Side information as to what has driven some of these matters.
No, for sure. But the reason I ask that is because my concern is, we're going to take care of the, of the teacher spread, but kids aren't going to get vaccinated for quite a while, which is another reason why I want to correct this quarantining issue, because it's been stated that we're going to be in great shape once those, once our teachers, 88% of our teachers are vaccinated. But we're not really going to be that fantastic shape because the, the other part, which is half right now, but I bet you it was at least 80% before, was kids. They're not going to get vaccinated. They're just starting the trials on pregnant women. Kids are last in these trials. So, this, the quarantining of children, of students, because of, you know, because of the close contact in the schools, which will become, from students, they're not going to get vaccinated. This problem, this quarantine problem will continually be there until we start vaccinating children, and we don't know when that's going to be. So, that's why I think we have to address this now, because it's not going to happen. Another thing that Governor Evers said is he wasn't going to mandate these guidelines. Granted, he said he wasn't going to mandate masks either. But I think that he's not going to mandate these guidelines that they've come up with is because he wants this issue handled at the local level, at the school level. So, I mean, they're not going to be mandated. One other question I have, Joe, are we letting kids back on the rapid test? Or they have to take PCR?
I could give you an update on that. The PCR test is the surefire test. I believe if you are symptom-free and you have not been in close contact, so not a close contact and symptom-free, on that sixth and seventh day, I believe you can use the rapid test to come back. I would have to check that for you, though.
No, that's fine. I was just wondering. But if you are in close contact, you're not getting back on a rapid test because basically 70% incorrect either way.
Correct. The rapid test hasn't been proven...
Right.
Mrs. Reincheck?
Thank you. So, is what, how is what Ms. Ay said about 3 days, 2 days? How can that interfere if you're not taking the results of the rapid test?
So, one of the things to understand is, we, we will go back 48 hours from when a person started to get sick. And the weekends count in the calendar, in the count of this. So, Saturday and Sunday is still two days in the number of days out. We've also run into some situations where a kid was in school on Monday, and then they were home Tuesday and Wednesday. And then they tested positive on Thursday for COVID. And they perhaps did, you know, kids' quarantine periods are not always running 10 days. We had to quarantine some kids for shorter periods of time because of when we have been notified, and when the sick kid has come in. It hasn't always resulted in seven missed school days or 10 missed school days. Or weekends aren't there too. That's minimal time. I'm not saying that that's not, not significant. But nonetheless, it's still not seven missed days of instruction. It's five missed days of instruction. Or not 14 days of misinstruction, it's 10 days of misconstruction under the old guidelines.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I just want to clear something up. I'm on the website, healthychildren.org. There are trials underway for that. Anywhere they...
Yep.
And the, they're on schedule with the intent to hopefully vaccinate children. The older children, not the young children. The older children are most likely to transmit before they begin the next year. But, you know, the...
Can't hear, can't hear you, Pat.
Yeah, we're closing elementary classrooms more. So, the younger children are a lot of them who are quarantined, so.
Right.
But when, when we get... I mean, you could get a 17-year-old, but he's going to be out in college.
First of all, let's be clear that, you know, younger children don't transmit, and they don't show symptoms as much. And once we get to the level of activation of adults and older children, at that point, we'll be pretty much close to very much a herd immunity consequence. So, I'm looking and hoping that we'll be back to normal at the start of next school year as much as possible, and the quarantine thing will be a thing of the past. If we do all this arguing over the next two months of school, we should be focused on getting kids lifted up and reducing the quarantines by reducing the infections and better procedures and practices within the school district.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I definitely agree with you on that. And I agree with you that the smaller children do not transmit like the older children, which is why I want to change the quarantine. That's 100% true. And that's why the quarantine should probably be changed here, because they don't transmit. And that's a lot of who are quarantined.
Mrs. Reincheck, I probably cut you off before. I apologize, because you asked a question to Joe, but then a hand went up and I'll send it back to you. Sorry about that.
Okay. So, how long have we been in this green?
We've been in the green with the exception, I think, of a couple of days since January.
Okay. So, what I heard tonight and what I hear a lot is, Waukesha's a leader. Waukesha's a leader. And when I look at Wyoming and Missouri, Iowa, Nebraska, North Dakota, Ohio, Utah, Oklahoma, South Dakota, Florida, Indiana, Massachusetts, I see people that are leading. And if we've been in the green for all this time, I think it's time for us to lead. We have people coming to our district and calling our board president, asking, how are we doing this? How are we doing this? Well, let's keep leading through this and, and leading the way. And as far as too much just left of school, I'm not ready to just wash that away. That's my kids. That's, that's every day that has been gone and wasted is one day to me.
Mr. Montiel?
I'll make a motion, if I may. Are we at that point?
Motions can be made anytime.
Thank you. Again, it's a little dense, and I've got copies. Motion is, if the school district of Waukesha student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19 or its variant, they shall be isolated per CDC guidelines. However, the school district of Waukesha shall only quarantine students and staff for contact that occurs on school district of Waukesha grounds when students and/or staff were within three feet of a person who subsequently tested positive for COVID-19 or its variant. If either party was unmasked at all during that contact, students and staff who are out of isolation are exempt from quarantine unless they subsequently test positive for COVID-19 or its variant. But I typed it up because I...
Thank you.
Okay. I tried to make it smaller this time, but I get paid by the word.
Thank you for typing that out for us, Corey.
I'd like to say I memorized that as you presented.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to say I memorized that as you presented.
I didn't.
Is there a second to this motion? Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey? Discussion? Mr. O'Brien, call the question.
I'll second that.
Can I read the motion here? I'd like to have a little bit of time. Did, I had two copies, did... Everyone had a chance to read the motion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call out.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
No.
William Baumgart?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
No.
Amanda Roddy?
No.
Joseph Como?
No.
Motion fails 3 to 5.
Thank you, everyone, for our discussion and debate on this tonight. It's an important point. Okay, moving forward. We're at the consent agenda part of our meeting. Darren, did we have any gifts provided today?
Yeah, four gifts. Butler Mills, who received $1,500 from the Cloud Family Foundation to purchase trash receptacles. Some of you elementary received $2,000 from the Cloud Family Foundation for the mindfulness wellness hallway and art corner for their camp room. Waukesha Engineering Preparatory Academy received $750 from SPX Transformer Solutions to replenish supplies for Project Lead the Way classes. And Waukesha North received $750 from SPX Transformer Solutions to support the Project Lead the Way classes.
Thank you to all who have given to us. Your generosity, generosity is appreciated. Your agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. Included in the items for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on February 25th, 2021. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsions was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item number 1H. If anyone wishes to discuss this item, we do have scheduled a separate, an executive session this evening. Is there anyone who would like to have the expulsion set aside for separate discussion? Okay? Is there anyone that would like to have any item on the consent agenda set aside for separate discussion? Okay, Mr. O'Brien, will you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of five retirements, two resignations, two leaves of absence, and one new or modified teacher contract. The information was provided in your packet. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
You're second to that? Seconded by Mr. Baumgart? Any discussion? Sue, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, I just wanted to make one clarification. On the previous motion, I mistakenly said it failed 3 to 5. It's 3 to 6.
Yes, three yeses, six, six no's.
Correct.
Correct.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart? Diane Voight?
Aye.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck? Joseph Como?
Aye.
Passes 9-0. Thank you, Kurt.
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Passes nine zero. Thank you, Kurt. Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Seaver.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Tonight, I would simply like to be grateful and a little reflective as we think about where we find ourselves here in the school district of Waukesha. And as you probably saw on email, today we announced with tremendous excitement that our vaccine partnership with Pro Health Care has been officially solidified. And vaccine is on the way, and all of our staff who wish to be vaccinated, which is an impressive 88%, will have that opportunity beginning next week Tuesday at Waukesha Memorial Hospital from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, which is designated specifically for our staff and will work out great for keeping our schools open and getting our staff vaccinated. And we'll do that each day next week and beyond until all of our staff have the opportunity who would like to take advantage of it. And if we add in the 115 people that Pro Health has already assisted, 20 people who went through our employee clinic, and the 181 staff who have appointments tomorrow at the Expo Center, we can see very easily that we're making great progress through very impressive community collaboration. And that's all just short of one year since this all began. So if we really reflect on that, it's pretty truly remarkable. In the Freeman today, Ms. Landish discussed that we are offering, what we are offering kids in high school who failed first semester courses to remediate those already during the second semester, as well as during summer school, which registration opens up for that on March 22nd. And our high schools have maximized these opportunities through one longer lunch period that also provides time for extra targeted academic, social, and emotional support. And so we really want to recognize our teachers, staff, and principals who continue to go above and beyond for kids and each other, which really has been truly inspiring during this pandemic. Am I in the right order here? Oh, yeah, I am. So I also want to just celebrate the fact that we keep talking about we are the largest school district in the state of Wisconsin that's consistently been open for in-person teaching and learning since September 1st. And across the district, we've been able to meet the needs of kids and families. And as of today, we have 89% of our kids that are in-person for learning, and 11% have chosen either our SDW Elementary Virtual Program or our secondary live streaming option. We've been successful in keeping the schools open due to our intensive mitigation strategies, which we need to continue as they've proven to be highly effective. And certainly, we have to thank Dr. Cook, our reopening committee, which included Mr. Montiel from last summer, and our custodial maintenance staff, our health and isolation room staff, our nurses and contact tracers, our teachers, our aides, our principals, and of course, our kids and our parents for their vigilance in adhering to those mitigation efforts. And last week, we announced our plans that Mr. Baumgart talked about earlier tonight for next school year, the 21-22 school year, in terms of our learning models. And we'll plan to offer our five-day face-to-face traditional model, as well as our robust and trusted over time E-Achieve Academy. And then that same reopening committee led by Dr. Cook will begin meeting this spring and through the summer to determine what we will need in place for September 1 and the beginning of the school year. So overall, as we approach one year of COVID-19 in our lives, it's quite amazing to me all that has been positive, productive, and kept the school district of Waukesha moving forward and open. I also want to say that I appreciate you as the board as well for your commitment to helping us through a truly uncertain time. And you and we all had to make decisions unlike any we've ever had to make before. And as a board, you did it with class and respect for one another and for everyone that you represent. And lastly, I just want to say that I very much look forward to finishing this school year strong, both academically and extracurricularly, to having proms and graduations at our high schools for our kids and our families. And I look forward to our work together in the district and in the community as we keep turning the corner on this COVID-19 pandemic. So I know we have a lot of difficult things we talk about, but I think it's also very important that we reflect and be grateful for the progress that we've made and for the relationships and the partnerships that we have.
And we've been through a lot this year, haven't we? And I appreciate you highlighting, highlighting things. I too hope that as we move forward, we can finish strong here. Yes. Thank you, Dr. Seaver. Okay, moving on to our committee reports. That's where a lot of the heavy lifting occurs and details occur. As you know, we rotate our schedule of which committee presents first. And this month, Government Relations Committee, presented by Ms. Roddy, will start.
Thank you, Mr. President. My apologies in advance. I typed this on my phone and I didn't realize it was a three and a half page document. So get comfy. The Government Relations Committee met Monday, March 1st, here at the Lynton Building. The committee has one action item for the board and five discussion information items. The committee is seeking approval of the School District of Waukesha Legislative Priorities Document. An updated copy is on your desk for your review. And I so move.
You're second to that motion? Seconded by Mrs. Voight? Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
Question, give us some, I just realized we have a change on this. Is there anything you want us to be aware of? I didn't even read it yet.
The change is highlighted in yellow, so that's the only addition to what you received in your Friday packet.
What did we, I got a quick read here. Okay, thank you.
Pretty much, Bill, we added, we had a very brief statement on increasing funding for special ed costs. We just added some Waukesha-specific data along with that request.
Good. Mrs. Voight?
I was the one who recommended that change, so let me explain a little bit about it. At our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting on Monday evening, our auditor was telling us that our total special ed funding is $27.28 million in the Fund 27 category. And then she went on to say that $18.7 million in local dollars has to be pulled out of Fund 10, which is the fund, the general fund for all kids, to cover those expenses. And that's a huge amount of money. And I think of over the years, how many cuts we've had to make in schools we've had to close and, you know, just on and on. Teachers we've had to lay off, et cetera, et cetera. And a lot of it is because we've been trying to make that special ed service fund whole. You know, it has to come out of the general fund to make it happen. And one of the big things that we're trying to encourage the, you know, the governor's trying to encourage, DBI's trying to encourage, legislators to think about raising that reimbursement rate to make it more affordable for us to be able to do our business, you know, with the funds that they provide.
Thank you. The intent of the federal government back in the 70s still was to actually pay 100%. The federal government pay 100%. Were we at 25% now?
28.
Okay, 28%.
Just, I think it's a recent history. The state was, it's on. The state was funding special ed at about 65%. The state was funding special ed at about 65%. And since the mid 90s, that has steadily gone down to the 28%.
Good, I mean, understood. That's a significant dollar amount that is transferred from the general fund over. Any other points that people have comments on? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I guess I'm unhappy or uncomfortable, I don't want to say unhappy. I'm kind of uncomfortable talking about, I understand that we're not getting a lot of the stuff that we're asking for that we should be giving. But this kind of paints a picture that we're in a dire financial straits when we're really not as a school district. I mean, as of today, we're sitting pretty. Yes, declining enrollment is what we want to describe as a structural deficit, so there's declining enrollment. But that's what every school district across the state deals with. So I'm a little concerned when we, when we, when we talk about being in dire financial straits when actually we're doing pretty good. I mean, yeah, we always could use more money, but the reality is year to year, we've been running a surplus. And yes, we cut to adjust for class size reduction and, you know, enrollment reductions. But E-Achieve up, that's contributing to this money. We saved over $15 million last year on expenses. Yeah, we had some expenses this school year for COVID. But compared to where we were 10, 15 years ago, we're looking pretty good. So that's one of the, that's a concern I have with the document when we start talking about financial problems. Certainly, we want to get our costs recovered appropriately, but this district is not, we're not broke.
I think if you were to take a look at the audit report and our financial reports, overall, Mr. O'Brien, I would agree that especially over the course of the last 10, 15 years, we've made fantastic strides. And actually, I think our constituents understood, understand how we do take the finances very seriously, and we've, I think, done a good job at controlling costs. And they rewarded us with, you know, a passed referendum with a vote of confidence of 66% of our constituents, which I think is fantastic. But I also know that Mr. Clark, our Assistant Superintendent, our CFO, has warned us actually this, that this year is going to look pretty good, and we're going to be spending more monies over the next couple of years. So if you were to take a look at the financial projections that he's provided to FNF, it's, there's going to be some things that we're going to have to make some tough decisions on. And Darren, I don't know if you want to maybe at least, don't, it'd take too long to go into all the details, but at a high level, can you reflect on some of those things?
About 30 minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, I would agree with Kurt on the fact that with the federal funds that are coming in, that our financial picture is looking better, right? It makes sense. What we don't know, especially with S R 3, the most recent one, or soon to be recent or approved, I can't remember, is how long those dollars are going to be dispersed? Is that going to be all in one wave? Is it going to be spread out over multiple? I'm probably in the minority amongst my peers. I would have rather had more stable, consistent state funding than S R 3. Because I want the long game, I don't want the short game. And I have some fears that the state might see the funds that we're getting on the federal level and pull back the strings a little bit on the state annual budget in terms of funding. But overall, and I mentioned this to Kurt when we talked yesterday, if you would have told me we would be where we are today a year ago, much like the vaccines, I guess, I would have, I would have taken that and ran as fast as I could. So overall, we are very strong, especially from where we were a decade or so ago. So we do have many things to celebrate. But there's still the underlying structural deficit that I believe is still there. And whether the feds fund our way through two or three years of that where we don't really feel it, you know, it'd be interesting to see.
In addition to structural deficit, though, there is going to come a time where our enrollment won't decline forever. And when we start to go back up, it's going to take a few years to work through that. Could you explain that a little bit, Darren?
Yeah, the, our current projections have, you know, it's a slow-steady decline. About 1.5% is projected, and that's, and the projections have been very accurate over time. But that's shown to keep declining through 2030, I think was the last year of the study. So, you know, extended period of time. The beauty of the funding formula is it's based on a three-year average, so it softens your drop, it kind of cushions your drop. The downside of that is when you eventually turn, and history says we will eventually see that wave come back up, is that three-year average kind of holds you back. So you have three years of growth, and then all of a sudden, you're, you're kind of, I guess, in a better position. So it's slow to impact you on the way down, and it's slow to help you on the way up. So, but it could all change with one annual budget cycle as well, but it's not going to be an immediate relief for us.
Mr. Baumgart?
Could you give an explanation of the purpose? I don't have any objection to this legislative priority, but what's the focus here? What's the purpose? I mean, you're not going to go and take this to the government in Madison, are you? Is that what this is?
So as, this was actually like section three or four of our committee, and it's got bumped because it's in action. So if you were to hear the rest of the report, we heard reports from the regional level with SWSA, from the state level, from the federal level. And everybody right now is in legislative agenda timeline. So basically, what everybody's doing is working on their plans. So what we somewhat did, and correct me if I'm wrong to my committee colleagues, is we basically took all of those agendas, overlaid them, saw which ones were either repeating or pieces that were important to, that we thought would be important to Waukesha, and so let's put it into one document. We can align ourselves with what some of these groups are doing. But these will be our talking points if we were to run into a legislator or if we were in the situation where we could advocate for Waukesha.
Thank you. That helps a lot. Mr. O'Brien?
Is there a motion in the floor for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Look, I want to vote for it, but I want to just strike one line to make it easy for me to vote for it. And it's the last line in the second paragraph. Now we are looking for support from the state level to prepare to move forward with our existing structural deficit and the legacy cost.
Which one? I'm sorry, Kurt.
Paragraph two, last sentence.
Yeah, paragraph two, last sentence, those three lines down there. Everything else is fine. We make reference to the structural deficit in the top paragraph. You don't need to pound it through in the second paragraph. And, you know, we speak to the structural deficit as something that all school districts face, instead of trying to pound it that we're in that situation when we're really not yet.
Is that an amendment that you're making?
That's a proposed amendment to the document.
Okay. A proposed amendment or an amendment that you want to, is that a formal amendment?
The formal amendment.
Okay, is there a second to that? Is there a second to that amendment? Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion on the amendment?
Wait, the amendment is to what? Take out that whole sentence?
Yeah, now we are-
Now we are.
Now we are looking all the way to the end of that sentence.
Okay. Everyone understand the amendment? Further discussion amendment? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote. On striking the sentence in the second paragraph, that is, now we are looking for support from the state level as we prepare to move forward with our existing structural deficit and the legacy cost, and the legacy costs the COVID-19 pandemic will provide.
Karen Reincheck? Amanda Roddy?
Yes.
Diane Voight?
Yes.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight one, Sue.
That's the amendment.
Now back, yeah, the amendment passes eight one. Now back to the original motion to approve the legislative priorities for 2021 through 2023. Any other further discussion? That, that last sentence in the second paragraph is stricken now? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Amanda?
Fantastic, thank you, everyone. Now we all have talking points as we are in different situations where we can hopefully influence. Okay, so the discussion items that are, probably about the next few of them are, all deal with legislative priorities at the regional, state, and federal level. So I'm going to just read through all of them. If there's something that's burning that you just need to ask, feel free to interrupt me, otherwise I'm going to proceed. The first of the discussion information items was our monthly Southwest, Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance, our SWSA update. Mrs. Voight shared with the alliance, shared the alliance's 2021 through 2023 legislative advocacy framework draft. The proposed priorities included a comprehensive and sustainable funding system, increase state support for the most vulnerable, high-needs population, increase support for mental health, early childhood, and wraparound services to support learning, develop, attract, retain high-quality teachers, provide transparency and valid accountability systems for all publicly funded schools, preserve and maintain local control of public schools, and advocate for no further unfunded mandates on public education. The committee discussed and had questions on how these priorities were selected, how SDW can send in proposals, and how often these priorities were reviewed. And Mrs. Voight will be looking into those for us. As part of the draft- how these priorities were selected, how SDW can send in proposals, and how often these priorities were reviewed. And Mrs. Voight will be looking into those for us. As part of the draft, SWSA listed 10 topics they would advocate for. From that list, the committee discussed in further detail and asked questions around increases in special education, reimbursement rates, temporarily allowing retired, oh, help me with this word, annuitants to return to fill gaps without hours lost, and et cetera, and suspending student assessments.
Questions?
Questions?
Comments?
Okay, thank you. The next discussion information item was a review of the School Administrators Alliance, or the SAA,'s 2021 through 2023 legislative agenda presented by Dr. Seibert. The items listed in this legislative agenda was our, our students with disabilities, predictable, sustainable school funding, pupil count mitigation, children's mental health, early learning opportunities, English learners, economically disadvantaged students, educator retention and recruitment, vice versa, private school vouchers, revenue limit equity, declining enrollment relief, broadband access, and equalized school transportation costs and impact. Dr. Seibert, is there anything you wanted to add or highlight to that list from the SAA?
No, you did a great job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, moving on. Our next item was the review of the American Association of School Administrators, or the AASA, 2021 legislative agenda presented again by Dr. Seibert. Items on the agenda are as follows: responding to the COVID-19 pandemic to ensure appropriate federal support for local leadership, ensure the appropriate federal, state, and local balance, support students, families, and special populations, strengthen support of school personnel, strengthen district operations, support students through appropriate curriculum, learning expenses, experience, excuse me, and assessments, and lastly, to enhance district technology, infrastructure, and student data privacy. On a side note, this is a national committee, and one-third of the committee members come from Wisconsin, one of which is our very own Dr. Seibert. So, thank you for representing us at that level.
Any questions or comments on those items?
Wonder. We're almost there, folks. The next two items stem from the committee's desire to keep up and keep an eye on the next budget cycle. 2021, 2023 state budget cycle update was presented by, I may do a doctor, Mr. Darren Clark. The WASDA offered their legislative update to their statewide members this past February. The legislative agenda includes the 2021, 2023 state budget, SAA budget priorities, Evers K-12 budget proposal, suggestions for budget advocacy, working with the governor's office, and the race for state superintendent. From this list, the committees discussed in further detail the special education aid. Any questions regarding that piece? Oh, all right. The last item is the federal funding that included, that includes an update on SRR2, funds distributed in the Wisconsin, in Wisconsin. Again, that was presented by Mr. Clark. These documents were part of our attachments and board docs for our committee. And I'm going to ask Mr. Clark if he can elaborate a little bit more on the two documents that we have.
Yeah, the, the most important one out of the documents is a summary sheet that we have for all the federal funding sources that we have out there. I'm holding an old version here that has gear. We didn't get any gear funding, but we've replaced it with SRR3, which we'll be hearing more about. So, right now, FEMA, we have a claim into FEMA for a million dollars. SRR round one was 1.2, SRR round two was at least 4.8. I had sent you kind of a lengthy email several weeks ago about how districts within the state, and every district has its own lens, and if I worked for whatever one, I'd be advocating their position. So I'm not here to say I have the perfect solution. But we, we came out in that, but it really came down to, should every kid be funded at the same level, or should socioeconomic factors play a game or a role in that? And it came out with joint finance coming down on funding school districts that were in face-to-face instruction more, and then the majority of the money was allocated on Title I, or kind of a socioeconomic scale. So we, I guess we were a winner in that. But it just showed how, you know, there's different points of view on how this should be funded. We also have the unemployment compensation playing in that we hope to get, and then a small, and then the food service one, we'll talk a little bit more about later on in the agenda.
Anybody else with questions or comments?
Right. In other business, the committee would like to continue the trends of the full board in a goal to become more paperless. So, it was just a side note that we had discussed, but ensuring that everybody is fully equipped on how to operate and be able to access board docs. The committee also revisited the idea of having the committee meeting televised, and Dr. Seibert and I are currently working on that to make sure, get staff to have available and for us to set up a consistent meeting time. The next government relations committee meeting is to be determined. The committee will continue, however, to continue to the report quarterly to the full board, which will be again in June. So with that, Mr. President, that completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. Our next committee, Safety and Security Committee, given by Ms. Reinichak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report this evening. The safety and security meeting was delayed until, Dr. Kupka?
April, I think it's Monday.
Oh, yes, at 6:00 PM on the 19th. Yes, thank you. April 19th at 6:00 PM, we will have our next safety and security meeting right here.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. We didn't have any action items. We had a couple of items. Sorry. We did not have any action items. We had a couple of information items. One was on the staffing process, a review of how we're going to staff for next year. We had the secondary students have selected courses, and Sharon Thiede, Rachel Herman, and the secondary master schedules have been meeting to determine the staffing needs for next year. Enrollment is being updated later this week. We've been looking at elementary staffing needs next week. We also had a information item on the staff vaccination update. Basically, that was covered by Dr. Seibert in the superintendent's report, and in interest of brevity, I'm going to cut that portion and say, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. O'Brien. Moving on to the Policy Committee, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, well, because Amanda came up with three and a half pages, I came up with 22 policies. Now, seriously, those 22 policies are basically in that characterization of being a kind of a slam dunk, but things you were told by the government, told by Niola to do. So you've got the list in front of you, so there's about a sentence after each one explaining what it was about. For the most part, it's a lot of just clarity, changing words.
A lot of technical corrections to the policy.
Technical, basically, yeah, good word, technical corrections. There is one specific one I wanted to just read, because it had two sentences in it. Policy 0172, dealing with legal counsel, because it potentially could impact board members, appropriate word sentences, authority to contact such counsel for legal advice or assistance on behalf of the district, shall normally be that of the board president and superintendent, unless otherwise specified by the board. So, if you're looking to legal counsel, you're looking to Joe or Jim. Just so you don't make a mistake, that's all that's about. Other than that, again, there's 22 of these, you've, you've had them in front of you from the packet last Friday. I'm sure you've absorbed them completely. So, I'm going to make a motion for the approval of, of the 22 policies listed under the action items here.
It's 20.
It's been corrected.
Actually, 22.
22, okay.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thing by Mrs. Voight? Discussion on, on those? Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, could we get a little more flavor on this? Apparently, I assume there was some discussion about legal counsel contacts.
About what? Legal counsel?
Yeah, the, the point you just brought up, to me, it's a little concerning because I think a board member should be allowed to contact legal counsel, provided that they notify, you put a notification to the superintendent and the board president that legal counsel is.
And it says, unless otherwise specified. So you could be, you could get approval.
Well, I don't think you need approval, but they should be notified. And any work they would have to do would have to be approved by, you know, they'd get approval from the superintendent or the board president, I don't care. But if a, if a board member feels that they need to ask legal counsel for help, I don't think it should be restricted to go through the superintendent.
This legal counsel for themselves?
No, legal counsel. Let's say, you know, one of the things, you know, I asked for legal counsel for advice on the, on their, you know, decision we made last fall, and I made sure Dr. Seibert, you know, also, when we got with SW, again, there was a lot of interaction with legal counsel, so I'm a little concerned that, I can understand that the board member has to notify the superintendent and the board president, and any cost may need to get approved by them. But I, I don't think they should have to get permission from the superintendent.
What's Niola's view on that one?
Well, this was a recommended clarification from Niola on this policy, it was a recommended update. We certainly could hold this policy, go back to committee, and discuss it further at committee, or it does fall into how the board wants to operate as it pertains to reach out to counsel for, for advice on that.
I, I would ask that it just be pulled, because I think it's an important policy.
Pull it.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Mr. McCaffrey?
I just have one question on the policy. The policy meant to, and I realize we're pulling it, to limit board members' ability to retain an attorney or talk to an attorney, because those are two separate things. So it says the board may employ or retain an attorney. So, we can't talk individually to the attorneys that we, as a board, have retained? Is that what the policy was meant to do?
Well, authority to contact such counsel for legal advice or assistance. I guess it's.
So you can't talk to the attorneys individually that we hire?
That's what we have.
No.
That's going to be a problem.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that is the intention in what we've done in the past. So we've had board members over the course of time, but I'm president, or, you know, Bill, you've been president, you know, people will approach the president and say, hey, you know, we, we want to talk on whatever. And I think that you've seen that our standard practice is, is, well, we first of all figure out, we kind of talk amongst us, well, what, what is this? And we determine, is this something valid that we want to have the district be represented? And then usually what's happened is, is whatever board member brought forth and information, at least when I've been president, I've felt that it was best for the attorneys to be dealing with the board member who brought that to the attention. I know I've done that for several of you. I won't list names, but, you know, it just, that's just, so, so I would hope that we could phrase this in a manner where, I, I think it is important to kind of have a focal point to determine whether or not the district does need representation. So I'm, I'm in favor of have that going through the board president and/or the superintendent. But I don't think it should be restrictive in, in, in having that, that other person participate. Pulling myself and coming up with some different wording would be easier for the handle of this. So I will pull that out.
Yeah, just if you don't mind. We, we do have to be careful, you know, as someone who's dealt with attorneys a lot, I always try to make sure the importance of attorney-client privilege, and it's always preserved when it's one-to-one, and the more people you bring in. So that's one of the reasons I'm careful about something like this, okay? So if the attorneys give us some guidance, that would help too.
I, I do believe that is also, that is the case, the client confidentiality does pertain to multiple people from the district. It's not just a one-on-one. So I believe the client confidentiality. So let's say, and I'm just making this up, let's just say Diane came, she had an issue, we talked about it with Jim and I, and then we said, let's hire whichever firm, and let's talk about this. Any of the communications, once we hire that firm, is client confidant.
Yeah, the problem is.
Client confidentiality.
The problem is, Mr. Como, is I may not want to have those communications with you without having the attorney-client privilege shield first, you know. So when we start talking, that's all open records, until we put up that shield. So that's what we do. I just want more legal guidance, and I think pulling is the best bet.
Hey, we pulled it.
Yep.
We pulled it.
I think it's a good point. I think it's a good point.
We pulled it. Ain't there?
Well, we tried to give you a little bit to chew on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you, you can come to the meeting next Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, any other? We've got 21 other ones. Anybody have, any other ones on there that you're concerned about? We didn't think there would be other than this one, there'd be too much. So, we, yeah, we have a motion and a second on, on these. Okay.
Are we ready to take the roll call vote?
I am.
Okay, Sue.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Bill?
Okay, now we have policy 8395, which, and this is, traditionally, we've done it, we've been through the two greetings. This is the policy with student mental health services. Been through two meetings, brought it back, this is the second time to the board. So at this point, I am moving for approval, 8395, food, mental health services.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Thing by Mr., I saw Mr. Montiel's hand go up first. Discussion.
I'm going through it.
Okay. Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Okay.
And we were, we are just introducing as a discussion information item this evening, there will be a new policy, 7440.03, small unmanned aircraft systems, that is drones. This policy is provided to describe the circumstances under which approval may be provided for a district staff, for the district staff, to use unmanned aircraft, otherwise known as drones, in a manner compliant with the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association and the Federal Aviation Administration. And Joe, do you want to just throw a couple extras in there on what this is about?
Yeah, Niola has been working on trying to capture, since drone technology became popular, the school districts have requested some protections, because we have big, large fields around our schools, and they're very convenient places for people to want to show up and fly their, their drone around. We want to be able to use them for practical purposes, checking roofs, you know, with the contractor, taking pictures of our, our referendum work, filming for an athletic event, you know, just using something to count there. So that's why we're, we're proposing this. We also don't want them to be used as areas where people could fly them around and be mischievous in the neighborhood, you know, bother neighbors. We would want to be able to limit that.
So that'll be coming up next week, and this will be a two-round thing.
Any questions or input for, for Bill on that?
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
March 16th, next meeting, 4:00.
All right, fair enough. Moving on to our Technology Committee, given by Mrs. Voight.
Next is financing facilities, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have five action items and five discussion information items on the agenda this evening. First action item is approval of copier vendor. The committee was updated on the results of the RFP for copy print devices, which had begun in 2020. Due to concerns with equipment availability during the pandemic, was postponed for a year. Eight proposals were received and evaluated. Gordon Fleisch submitted the proposal which best meets the needs of the district and will generate an estimated $50,000 in annual savings. Committee approved Gordon Fleisch to provide the copy print devices and related service throughout the district for a period of five years and ISO moving.
Your second to that, singed by Mrs. Voight? Discussion? I, I do appreciate the RFP process that we've developed here, the, the, kind of the matrix, if you wish, and deciding, you know, looking at what's most important. We don't just look at price, just so you know. Service and other, other aspects came, came into this, so I don't remember all the ones off the top of my head, but it's a, it's a very thorough process, and we use it for all of our RFPs. Seems to work well for us. Mrs. Voight?
And in this particular case, I think it's significant to note that in the comparison, we're saving $53,000 each year with this choice over the provider that we currently have. $53,000 a year is a pretty substantial reckoning, and I think it's a really good decision.
And not compromising the technology.
Right.
And so we're still using the same software program, is that correct?
Yeah.
Software program? And the technology is fantastic.
It's called Paper Cut.
Canon, I think, is what we're going with?
Canon.
Yeah, we're going with Canon copy, but our Paper Cut is the system that we use to tie all of the printers together, just your wife.
So there won't be a big learning curve for our employees either.
Not at all.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? Okay, so we're looking at the approval of the copy print vendor. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero.
Great, thank you. Our second action item this evening is the approval of the agreement with Pro Healthcare to provide healthcare clinic services. To replace the current health, employee health clinic, it was decided this past January that the district would move ahead to a partnership with Pro Healthcare. Legal counsel has reviewed the contract, and the only thing left is to decide the number of locations and hours. The committee approved the contract as presented for a term of three years, with the option for two additional years, but with the requirement that the initial clinic setup, which will be finalized by the administration, not to, not exceed two locations, 40 total hours of service, or a total cost of $479,360, which is less than half the annual cost of the current clinic, and ISO moving.
Is there a second to that? Given by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion? Now, this is a significant savings, and I, I do think we're going to improve, improve the services, is my hope, and hopefully we're also going to increase who uses it. So as those things improve, hopefully we get more to use it, so. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on approving the agreement between Pro Health, Pro Healthcare to provide the healthcare clinic services?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart. Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero. And this takes effect when, Mr. Clark?
January first of 21. Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking the--
Yeah.
The clinic?
So the clinic, right now, the clinic that we're going to will continue through--
I'm sorry, January first of 2022.
Folks, okay. Excellent, thank you.
It technically ends on the 12th thirty-one of 21.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you. My third action item is the approval of prescription plan consideration. Specialty prescription drugs cost the district approximately $2.6 million per year, which is 68% of our annual prescription spend. Jeff Schultz from HNI last month discussed a process change to reduce this growing cost. Prescription drug coverage will not change for an employee or their family, simply the process to garner their specialty prescriptions. The process change will look to maximize pharmaceutical companies' co-pay cards and patient assistance programs in an effort to offset expenses otherwise incurred by district employees and/or the district health net. Based on the current level of utilization, this process change will affect only 42 of our covered employees or members, which will allow us to better customize a smooth transition for these staff members. The other 99% of staff will see no change from our current process. The committee approved the prescription plan process and ISO moving.
Your second to that? Singed by Mrs. Reinichek? Discussion? And this is a, this is ongoing savings also. What I like about this is it also covers medications or drugs that have not been invented yet. Usually those newer ones that are introduced to the market, that have a significant impact on various diseases, cost a lot of money, tens of thousands of dollars in many cases. And so this, 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 if we, if this does pass, we will be looking at also saving on future medications that haven't even been invented yet, so I think this is a good, good move to make. Any other comments or discussion on that? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek. Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue?
All right, thank you. My fourth action item is approval of the irrevocable letter of credit. The city of Waukesha requires this letter of credit to be established to ensure final landscaping and finishes are completed for the Whittier and Hawthorne construction project. The committee approved the issuance of the irrevocable letter of credit to the city of Waukesha in the amount of $13,596, and ISO move.
Your second to that? Given by Mrs. Voight? Discussion? Questions? Hey, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero, Sue?
All right, my last action item is the approval of referendum debt refinanced. After April first, we will have $5,155,000 of our referendum debt that is able to be refinanced at this time. Key Bank, Zion Bank, and Waukesha State Bank have submitted refinancing rate proposals. Waukesha State Bank is proposing a 1% interest rate. The current rate is 2.17, but the district can only make one prepayment, payment. No action is, was taken at our meeting, but since our discussion Monday night, the administration believes we should proceed with Waukesha State Bank's proposal. Due to the late date of our April meeting and the related loss of interest savings, we will be trying to schedule a virtual full board meeting on Monday, March fifteenth, at 6:30 PM to consider this financing. It is estimated this refinance will save the taxpayers over $45,000 in interest costs and provide a long-term interest rate hedge if the district decides it can no longer continue our advanced principal payments. There is no action needed at this time.
So on Monday, did, Sue, have you had a chance to call around yet to?
No, I didn't, because we were meeting tonight.
Oh, okay. Is there, is there anyone who can't?
We did check with Karen, though, just to follow up on our, our conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Kurt?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add some, you know, I called Mr. Clark out because I had some questions after I saw the FNF. I just want to make sure that we understand that the 1% is a fixed rate, it's not a variable. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
Correct.
So it's a very good rate for all five years. And the other thing, I think, I don't know how many people are watching this time of night, but we tried to do an accelerated pay down on the right debt. We're in the process of doing that relative to the referendum. And the reason that we tried to speed, you know, get it paid off quickly is, we like to be debt-free, and we're in a position where in a few years we'll be debt-free again. And it saves interest savings, and it saves cost of financing, and especially when our taxpayers are exposed on water bills going forward, it'd be nice to get a little reduction in their school tax and all that. So overall, we continue to look for ways to cut the cost of our referendum debt. Just because we give them approval of referendum doesn't mean we don't try to be efficient thereafter, so.
I mean, typically a $60 million debt, we had even talked with our auditors, most districts would take 20 years to pay that off. And we may be, we may be, depending upon how this board votes in future years, we may have it paid off in six years. And that's where the savings comes in, in the interest rate. Any other questions or comments on that? Mrs. Voight?
What time was the meeting supposed to be on Monday?
Thirty.
Thirty, virtual?
Was that?
Yeah, virtual, virtual meeting, 6:30 Monday. Can everyone make that? Anyone can't make that? All right. We got lucky. Yeah, yeah. Sue, will you be the person sending that out, or Darren, or? Okay. So we'll look for that. Monday, 6:30. And you'll have, obviously, the documents will be ready by Monday.
Yeah, we, we would have acted sooner, but it, once it all kind of came together, Waukesha State, you have to go through the bond council process, and it, it takes a handful of days just to get all the paperwork set, set up, so Monday will be, that'll be great.
All right, so we are considering, any other questions or comments? We're considering, well, it's not an action now.
Yeah, it's not an action.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. McCaffrey.
You're all good.
That's what Monday's for, you're supposed to tell me.
Yes.
All righty. So my first discussion information item is the 2019-2020 audit report. Each year, school districts are required to have a financial audit conducted upon the completion of their fiscal year ending June 30th. Wendy Unger, CPA partner from Baker-Tilly US LLP, presented the 2019-2020 financial statements. There were no internal deficiencies to report to the board, nor were there any compliance issues to report.
Everybody's got a copy?
Two bound copies of the report.
The one's the actual financials, and the other one's kind of just a statement of process and that for Baker-Tilly.
All right. Mr. Ryan?
Oh, I'm sorry. I understand that we got, we got our Dan Warren traditional letter grade granted to us.
I allowed the board president to ask for that grade, I know he likes to do that, so he would have to report on what they--
Yeah, we got an A minus A.
Yep.
So I think we chose the A over the A minus. Very well. I mean, the, in all sincerity, it's one of the most important things that we do as a board, is make sure that our financials are accurate and correct, and that the information we're giving, we're making decisions are on is accurate, so that we can come back and feel comfortable telling our constituents the business that we conduct here is, is what it should be, and what we present to you is, is, is accurate. And that's, that's a very important task that we do. Obviously, we hire out a firm to do that every year. And really, we have had a very good year in terms of accuracy and processes, and we continue to have those. It's been actually, many years we've gotten very good, very good reports and audits back to us, with very few problems, and there was no significant issue to, to be reported. I can't remember the exact words that the auditor used, but in plain language, there, there were actually no issues really, just a couple of minor little tweaks in some processes that, actually, as those suggestions were, were made to Darren and his team, they, they were on the way to fin, doing them before they even had to put together the letter to, to the board saying what were they going to do about them? So hats off to you guys, keep up the good work. Mrs. Voight?
I think it's important to note that this was a virtual audit because of the pandemic, and the first one with this auditor.
Yes.
Which, again, is a whole new procedure compared to working with the same firm over and over again, like we had been doing in the past. So I think it's a double, doubly a major accomplishment to have done as well as we did for the review.
Yeah, we thought it'd be a good idea to bring another set of eyes in, and they didn't find anything out of the ordinary.
Okay, Pat?
All righty. My second discussion information item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. My third discussion information item is the budget development update, SR two and SR three. The committee was updated on the status of SR two, which was modified to allocate more funds to schools that provided the most face-to-face instruction. This should favor the district, but we will not know by how much until after the school year ends. SR three is still an unknown, but there is indication the funding will be greater than in round two. My fourth discussion information item is referendum budget, project bid results. Bid results for the remaining Phase Three work will be completed at Hawthorne and Whittier elementary schools have been received. We are on budget and in a position to proceed with the outlined work. And my last discussion information item is Airmark contract extension and amendment. We're at the end of our Airmark food service contract, but due to the pandemic, the USDA is allowing school districts to extend their contracts for one year. We would like to take advantage of this extension, since we would not be able to provide an accurate picture of our normal serving to prospective vendors. In addition, a vendor walkthrough is required during the RFP process, and we are not comfortable having extra people coming into our schools during food service. Through this pandemic, we have been operating under the summer food service program rather than the national school lunch program. This has allowed us to serve all students free meals for the 2020-2021 school year. Under the summer food service program, the district receives a larger reimbursement rate for meals served, and in, and in January 2020, 2021, that rate has increased to acknowledge the added costs of providing meals safely during the pandemic. Airmark is proposing a cost increase to the meal rate for the months of November first, 2020, to the end of the executive orders that have allowed schools to operate under the summer food service program to offset the increase in expenses and lack of revenue they have experienced through this pandemic. These two topics have been agendized for closed session if needed, with the option to take action later in tonight's agenda. So, Mr. President, that concludes my report. Our next FNF meeting will be April 12, 5:30 PM in the boardroom.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey.
Sue?
Now, moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held on March 2nd, 2021, 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. Three discussion information items appear on your agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The first discussion information item was an environmental education update. Erica Yoss, instructional coach and environmental education coordinator, provided an update on the exciting things that are happening in environmental education as we celebrate the 45th year of providing engaging outdoor education and experiences to our students in the community. Highlights included virtual programming opportunities, outdoor classroom spaces, and a new greenhouse.
Good. Questions? Comments?
Second discussion information item was kindergarten through 12th grade social studies update. Dee Garcia, director of multilingual and global education, Melissa Yao, director of elementary learning, and Rachel Herman, director, director of secondary learning, presented this update to the teaching and learning committee. The progression of social studies, curricular work continues this school year.[1762.61]
We are engaging elementary, kindergarten through 5th grade teachers, and secondary, 6th through 12th grade teacher teams to deepen their understanding and skill around inquiry-based learning, a shift that is essential to the changes in the Wisconsin state standards. Both groups are engaged in deeper learning around the state standards and how inquiry design model offers a framework for our future curriculum development. The inquiry design model is a framework for planning that will ensure teachers' instructional design reflects the academic rigor required for student performance on the 2022 Wisconsin Forward Exam, as that is the first year that these new standards will be tested. The ultimate goal is that our learners will develop a critical lens which will empower them to be engaged and active citizens in the global society. Kindergarten through 5th grade staff is also reviewing resources and currently in a pilot of teacher-created instructional social studies materials. The pilot started February 8th and concludes March 12th. Teachers from all grade levels, including special educators, English language development, and dual-language teachers are involved in the resource pilot and review.
Questions or comments? Okay?
Third discussion information item was an overview of the AP Human Geography textbook adoption process. AP Human Geography is taught in all three of our high schools, and in accordance with the AP College Board guidelines, teachers and students must utilize an approved textbook as a curricular resource aligned to the course. We have reached a point where new textbook adoption is necessary. Social Studies teachers Jill Anderson from West, Jenny Pano from South, and Jim Nelson from North joined Director of Secondary Learning Rachel Herman and reported out on the evaluation of the different textbooks for consideration. They started with about eight textbooks and have narrowed it down to three. Student feedback, teacher input, and an evaluation rubric will be used as they look to recommend a new textbook to the board in May.
Comments or questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report for this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz. That concludes our committee report. Moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for future Board of Education meetings, items to be added to the agenda? Or anything pointed towards a committee chair for committees? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was looking for my notes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Roddy.
No, that's okay. One of the public, members of the public who addressed us today had made mention of metrics for the community to show student progress. I know this information is usually presented at the Teaching and Learning, but is there a way to have, just, I don't know for how long, but a line item on our agenda to either address that, and I believe it's also always on our website? Or somehow get the information out there so that it's consistent, we can direct community new members where to find that type of information?
I think that's something that, you know, Dr. Seibert, Dr. Cook, and I, we can talk on what that might look like, how that's presented.
And along those lines. Same type of information, those graphs that you showed Dr. Cook were, you know, they're very visual, they were very helpful, something like that also on a monthly basis on our agenda that we get, we report out and say where our isolation, our quarantine numbers, so that the community can see those and hear them coming from our full board meetings as well.
Yeah, we'll work together on those items to figure out how we can. It might need to come into through committees, it might just be on the website, there could be a variety of different ways that we go, could be just reported out, could be part of Dr. Seibert's report, I mean, there's a variety of different ways that we could go on that, so we'll do some brainstorming and see where we go there.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we do have a need for both letter B and letter C this evening in closed session. B, as in Boy, and C, we need both. I'd be looking for a motion that includes both of those items. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, there's, no, there is a need that didn't have to do with what was in the consent agenda, if that's some clarification. Patrick?
I move to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 parent 1 parent F and 120.13 parent 1 parent C to review actions of the expulsion count. I also move to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 parent 1 parent E for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whether competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Airmark contract and amendment, and this, are you doing the sale or lease, Darren? Are we gonna talk about that? Okay, okay. The sale or lease of district property, Blair Elementary Tax Keys, W A K C 1306230 and W A K C 1306232.
Is there a second to that? Given by Mr. Dietz? Further discussion? Please take the roll call vote, Sue?
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
William Baumgart.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak. Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero. We will go into closed session, let's just take a quick five-minute break, and we may have a need to reconvene into open session. So, ready? We're all set? Okay, we're live, welcome, welcome back. We've reconvened into open session out of closed session, and we do have one point for consideration here, approval of the Airmark contract and amendment.
Do I separate?
Why don't we, we did them separately in committee, correct? So why don't we do that?
Patrick? I move approval of the Airmark contract extension.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
As approved by the committee.
Seconded by Mr. Montiel, discussion? That's a one-year contract.
Yes, one-year extension.
Yeah, we've.
Authorized by the USDA.
And when we were in our discussion in committee, our discussion in committee is it would have been a tough year to go out to bid, so we felt that it was best to continue our partnership with our current providers, so primary reason. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, Diane, will you please take the roll call vote on extending the Airmark contract by one year?
Aye.
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 Aye, passes nine zero, Diane. A second motion for consideration, Mr. McCaffrey?
I move approval of the amendment to the Airmark contract related to reimbursement.
Is there a second?
As approved by the committee.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Dietz? Discussion, comments, questions? Oh. I'm sorry, do you need Diane? Diane, you need to?
Your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, clarification of your motion, the amendment to the Airmark contract as...
As approved by committee.
As approved at the Financing and Financing Facilities Committee? Okay.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Okay, Diane, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz. Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight, aye. Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick, Karen Reinichak. And Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero, Diane?
Yes.
Okay, thank you everybody for our meeting tonight and hanging in there. We stand adjourned.